All right. I'm going to go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education for December 9th, 2014. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much. Please rise. Ready, begin.
(inaudible)
Thank you. We do have headsets available for the hearing impaired at the side table if you need them. At this point, we are moving to item C5, which is the administration of the oath of office. Dr. Cash?
Could I have Ms. Limone and Ms. Parker please stand? Hand over your heart or hand in the air, excuse me. And "I," your name.
I, Kate Parker.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations and thank you for being with us for four more years.
Thank you.[134.16][134.16](applause)
And we will now move to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This week is the hour of code. And tonight, we're going to recognize two students, Maria DeAngelis and Anna Brewer. And they are juniors at Santa Barbara High School. And they're bringing code not only to their school but to our community at large. This past summer, Maria and Anna, participants in the school's Computer Science Academy Master Program, created and ran a girls-only code outreach summer camp called Dream It, Code It. We understand that the girls worked under the guidance of Computer Science Academy Advisor and Cal Poly Professor Zoe Wood to create the innovative two-week program. Now they're in the midst of preparing a Dream It, Code It follow-up winter session coding class for girls in grades five through nine. It will be a nine-week, two-hour Saturday coding class. And in that, in those sessions, the students will learn to use MIT's programming tool, Scratch, to create fun, interactive projects like animations and games, as well as control of a variety of robots. The participants in that academy will also explore careers in technology and create projects about solving social issues using the value or the power of computing. And one more item, just about Anna, computer science is not her only interest. She took first place in the literature PTA competition. And the prompt for this year was, "The world would be a better place if." And she wrote a piece entitled, "Positive Psychology in Schools: Teaching Resilience Through Optimism." And we understand that she presented a persuasive essay, of which you all have a copy, that maps out something that can be taught in school and really help the world become a better place. And we look forward to reading the copy of your article. These two young ladies are problem solvers. They're great examples of students in our community. And we want to thank you and congratulate you for the great work. Dr. Drati has a certificate.[271.38][271.38](applause)
Congratulations. Nice job. Keep it up. Thank you.[276.38][276.38](laughter) Well, I was struck by the importance of the work that you do because this past summer, my own 10-year-old daughter attended a different coding camp. Had about 15, 17 students, and it turned out that she was one of only two females. And I was really struck. I was glad she stayed through it because there was definitely a sense of discomfort. And I think it's really important to make a safe space for women and particularly young women in coding, since it's got such an important future for the country. Thank you.
Thank you very much for representing Santa Barbara High School yourselves and women in our community. Appreciate it very much. And now I know you need to go back and do homework.[323.44][323.44](laughter) All right. Happy holidays. A couple other items to share with you. We're gearing up for our January 8th, 2015 Academy Showcase, which will again be at the Earl Warren Showgrounds. And it'll take place from 5:00 to 7:00. We will also do outreach at our four junior high schools prior to that evening. And we have some new features this year, one of which is, we're going to have the Computer Science Academy will be present there, which they weren't present this past year. And also, we're going to have counselors there from our all four high schools, as well as Santa Barbara City College and UCSB, which we think will be great to answer questions and provide additional information. All of our open houses are starting to happen after our winter recess, and all of those dates and times are on our website. And we'd encourage interested parents and families to go attend those. The Parent Resource Center Winter Open House takes place from the 15th to the 19th, from 1:00 to 5:00. And it'll focus on tips and strategies for family fund during the winter break. And finally, I do need to let everyone know that our district office reception area is going to have to move spots for a period of time because we are going to be renovating the elevator, finally. After years and years of needing to do that, it's going to be renovated starting over winter recess. We don't know how long it will be until they get involved in the work, so we've been told the worst-case scenario is until March. And so, we'll be providing as detailed instructions and information about how to access the basement through the stairs as possible and in as many ways as we can as well. So, and that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board comments and correspondence. Mr. Herron?
Bye, Mary Ann.[432.06][432.06](laughter) I've known Anna's grandmother for an awful long time.[433.06][433.06](laughter) And I'm just glad Dr. Brewer married her.[434.06][434.06](laughter) Got a lot of good grandkids.[435.06][435.06](laughter) I had the pleasure last night of going to the Adelante Board Meeting and reviewed their budget and interim reports, and they're doing very, very well. And, you know, as I've mentioned here many, many times, they are succeeding, and they will need more space. And so, I know those discussions are going to go on with Meg and Dr. Cash and hopefully come to some type of conclusion. They've got a really good working board. They've expanded it, and they really are dedicated to the success of that school, which really makes a huge difference. This morning was a special morning. It doesn't sound like a very special morning with a ribbon cutting of a bathroom. But the Santa Barbara Community Academy cut the ribbon of a bathroom they've been looking for, for eight years. And it was six years ago when I ran for office, and I saw the kindergartens using porta-potties that just, I think I used the word disgusted me at that time. And to see a brand-new bathroom for now, a whole new generation of kids, a whole new group of kids, because the ones that were there for kindergarten have now graduated. Long time in coming, but I thank Dr., uh, Mr. Hetjung for seeing that through and turning out a product that is very, very nice and so useful for that group of children. So, thank you very much. I went to the Partners in Education Career Night, or Career Morning. And I just want to mention one thing, and I'll get each of you a copy of this. But since they started their career voluntary mentoring and volunteer program, they've dedicated over 88,000 hours of help to our schoolteachers, which 37,000 hours are to our district. And that's a huge, huge number of hours of volunteer help they've coordinated. And as far as internships, over 400 students have been served with internships, and 34% have been our students in our district. So, Partners does a great job, and I just wanted to pass that on, just for your enlightenment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Limone.
And so, this past Friday, we had the State Street Holiday Parade, and so many of our schools and students participated. So, I have to just do a shout-out to all the students, the families, the parents who had to be up and taking to extra practices and there on time and all the good stuff. And I know we have some more students participating this Saturday at the Milbus Holiday, it's this Saturday, right?
It's this Saturday.
It's this Saturday at the Milbus Holiday Parade. And so, that's also coming up. So, I just wanted to send out kudos to all of those groups in our district that have been participating in community events.
Thank you. Moving on to C9, Announcement of Closed Session Action. We did not take any reportable action in closed session. I will report out that we did finish the public employee performance evaluation for our superintendent. And the review was positive, and we thank Dr. Cash for his service. And we will be taking action on his contract in open session. And we will also be taking action in open session on student discipline. And that brings us to public comments. Do we have any public comments today, Mr. Herron?
No.
No public comments on non-agenda matters, so that's to item D then, Acceptance of Donations.
I move to accept donations for December 9th, 2014, with gratitude. I'll second it.
Moved by Dr. Paz and seconded by Ms. Idelson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passed unanimously. At this time, we're moving on to the annual organization meeting. And at this time, I get to turn the gavel over to Dr. Cash.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Parker. Before we do have our election, I would like to thank you on behalf of all of us staff at the school district for your incredible service, your leadership, and dedication to students as the president this past year has been phenomenal. And a small token of our thanks are these beautiful red roses, which we think represent the happiness that you've brought to our district. And in addition to that, we couldn't let you go without another gavel that represents the leadership that you brought to our school district. So, thank you so much for your term as president.[728.82][728.82](applause) And with that, I will open up the nominations for president of this Board of Educate, I'm sorry, Mr. Herron.
We have a speaker's card that wants to talk about the annual elections, but I don't know who it's from.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Public comment on the annual election?
Yeah.
Right on. Go on up. You can have three minutes on this, Ms. Michaelberger.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me have a couple words here. I'm not really sure if this fits right here, but I'm just here as a parent tonight. I have two children that are served by the district. I'm Marcia Eichelberger. And I'm really here to thank Ms. Parker and to say, we really, really appreciate your leadership so much as parents in the community. I think you have done just an amazing job as president of the board this year. I want to thank all the board members for all of your hard work this past year. I have a feeling that maybe you don't hear that that often. And so, I just want to tell you how much I personally, and I think a lot of parents in the community appreciate how hard you work. You volunteer and give so much of your time, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of all my fellow board members, we really do appreciate that, so thank you.
So with that, I'll open the nominations for president of the Board of Education for the Santa Barbara Unified School District.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Ed Herron for president.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.[864.04][864.04](laughter)
Do, could we have a vote? Or?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any other nominations? Mr. Herron, congratulations. You are the president of the Board of Education for the Santa Barbara Unified School District.[882.82][882.82](applause)
Let me just say a couple words real quick before we go on. But Kate, I can't tell you, for you to go on for another four years after serving eight, 12 years at this is, your kids will be out of school maybe by then, I don't know.[928.93][928.93](laughter) But it's absolutely been amazing learning from you for the last eight years, or six years. You're a tremendous asset to the district, to your children, to all the children, all the parents, all the staff. There aren't words to thank you enough. I'm just happy you've got another four years. And the same to Monique. The past four years have gone so fast. And to have your dedication again for another four years. This team up here is among the best ever, Susan.[961.63][961.63](laughter) Susan Deacon, a past president, a past board member, elected the same year I was, so I have to be careful what I say, but, but it is. I mean, we have, for the last six years that I've been involved, the board has been tremendous. And that's all I can speak for, is we've had a great board for six years. And I hope it continues on this year and for the next two years. So, thank you very much, Kate and Monique. Appreciate it. Do I take over from here?
Mr. Herron, you are now the presiding officer.
Okay.
Our next item is the vice president.
Okay. Do I have nominations for a vice president?
I'd like to move to nominate Pedro Paz for vice president.
I'll second that.
Any further nominations? Move nominations be closed. All in favor of nominating Dr. Paz for vice president, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. You have two males as president and vice president.[1025.11][1025.11](laughter) So, I don't know how that goes over, but...[1028.23][1028.23](applause) I think it was probably better before when I was president, I didn't know anything.[1052.33][1052.33](laughter) And this might be harder. Okay. Next on the agenda is the appointment of a representative and an alternate to elect members of the Santa Barbara County Committee on School District Organization. And to my knowledge, Pedro, Dr. Paz has been the member of that, and I was the alternate. We have not been called upon the last year to do anything. So, anybody want those positions? Pretty easy.[1084.21][1084.21](laughter) Dr. Paz, do you want to continue?
I'll continue.
Anybody else want to be the alternate? I guess I'll continue. Okay. Designation of Secretary Clerk and Assistant Secretary Clerk. That's typically Dr. Cash and Mr. Tay. Does that take a motion?
No.
No.
The previous one does.
Oh, okay. The previous one does. All in favor of Dr. Paz and being the main member, myself being the alternate, say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm just wondering if you need a motion and a second on that.
I heard him. Okay, go ahead. Who's going to make the motion?
I will move to accept the, well, and actually, you know what, Mr. Herron? You can make the motion, so I'll second your motion.
Okay.
Let's do it that way.
Okay. Done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much. Okay. And we will appoint Dr. Cash as the executive officer and Mr. Tay as the secretary clerk of the board. Designation of date, time, regularly scheduled board meetings, the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, commencing at 6:30, have been designated as a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education with the following exceptions. July 2015, one meeting only, July 7th. November 2015, one meeting only, November 10th. December 2015, one meeting only, December 8th. Just as a reminder, in the past, we also had one meeting off in March because it normally was spring break. This year, March 24th is before spring break. Do we want to consider having that meeting or not having that meeting? Or any thoughts on that?
My guess is that we'll probably need the meeting. Maybe that could even be a board policy meeting, if that's something that we...
Okay. We'll go ahead with the March 24th. So, as written, one meeting in July, one meeting in November, one meeting in December. Do you have a motion to accept that schedule?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Board member committee appointments. We have several committees that we all participate in, and I guess, should we just take them one at a time, or do you want to let us know if you want to continue, or you want to change, or you want to drop off any of the committees?
I'm personally happy with my own status quo. I don't know if other members are okay with their existing appointments.
I am happy with my existing appointments.
Aye, likewise.
Okay. So, we have Youth Violence Prevention and Intervention Committee, Kate Parker; Graduation Requirements Committee, Monique Limone and Gail Idelson; Sustainability Committee, Gail Idelson and Pedro Paz; Wellness Committee, Gail Idelson and Ed Herron; Staff Special Education Parent Advisor Committee, Monique Limone and Pedro Paz; Audit Committee, Pedro Paz and Ed Herron. Do I need a motion for those, or that? Do you have a motion for those appointments?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. I've added another discussion item, and that's the board liaison to the Santa Barbara Unified School District charter schools. And in the past, we've had the Adelante Charter School as the main one. We have two others, the Santa Barbara Charter and the Peabody Charter. I've had communication, I think I shared it with you, from the principal at Peabody, who feels he, he has an awful lot of communication with the district and the people in the district, and that a liaison is really not necessary. I've had other communication now from Santa Barbara Charter, they definitely would like a liaison. So, the question is, is there anyone who would like to meet with the, who would be responsible for communications between us and Santa Barbara Charter? They meet the third Wednesday of the month at 7:00 at night, typically.
I'll do it.
Okay. Anybody else want to volunteer? How about Adelante? I've been at, I'm perfectly happy doing it, in fact, I love it.[1396.00][1396.00](laughter) Maybe we'll let you continue, Mr. Herron. But if anybody else wants to do it, you know, it's great. They're a great group to work with. Okay, so we'll, do I have a nomination for Ed Herron, Valadante, and Gail Idelson for Santa Barbara Charter?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passed. No opposed, I don't think. Okay. Board liaison to community groups. I'll take them as a group. Santa Barbara County Committee on School District Organization, we did that one, okay. Santa Barbara County School Boards Association, Kate Parker.
Yeah, and I'm happy to continue with that.
Okay. Santa Barbara Education Foundation, Kate Parker.
And I'm okay with continuing with that, too.
South Coast Youth Gang Task Force Leadership Council, Monique Limone, Pedro Paz, alternate.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Do I have a motion for those three?
I'll make the motion to continue those.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There is an awful lot of work behind the scenes that goes into all of these different committee assignments, and I appreciate the fact that this board is so eager to take on those responsibilities. Okay, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, there is an amendment to the consent agenda. You have a copy of it, and copies have been provided there. We want to, we've had a couple hires for teachers and one change in status, and we'd like to, particularly with the teacher hires, get those teachers teaching as quickly as possible.
And that's item F9.
Yes, that is correct.
And there also is a attachment to H5 that is available at the back counter also. It's the document that outlines the agreement with the Santa Barbara Teachers Association as to an increase of 3% retroactive to July 1st, 2014. Okay, consent calendar. Any withdrawals from that calendar?
Yes, I'd like to abstain from personnel item F9, and I'm abstaining because my wife is on the list.
I would like to pull F5. No, I won't pull it, thank you. I would say on F5, I've asked many questions on F5. I have passed along to you a sample of what the ED LIO agreement is, and I feel comfortable that it's a good move for us. So, F9 is being pulled. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of F9.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Do I have a motion for F9?
I'd like to make a motion to approve F9, which is approval of the Human Resources Recommendation List.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0 with one step abstention. To give you something to think about before we go into the action items, when we get to the conference items, I'm going to ask approval to combine I1 with I6. So, at the time we get to there, be thinking about that. And those happens to deal with open alternative school and the inter-district attendance policy. Action item number H1, approval of naming the machine shop at the Elling Center for Engineering and Education, the Amir Abu Shaheer Fabrication Laboratory. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, Mr. Herron. If I ever call you Madam President for doing that for two straight years, please correct me. You have before you tonight a wonderful opportunity brought to the board and our community by two incredible groups of people, the Mosher Foundation and someone who wishes to remain anonymous. And that is, they have met the $500,000 threshold for the naming. We have, as you've already called her out, Susan Deacon, who is on the Engineering Academy's Foundation Board, and she's here to answer any questions and make the presentation.
Ms. Deacon, welcome back.
Good evening, President Herron and Vice President Paz, board members, Dr. Cash and staff. My name's Susan Deacon. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, this time in my capacity as a board member of the Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy Foundation. And as Dr. Cash mentioned, you have before you a request to name the machine shop at the Engineering Academy. And we do have two tremendously generous donors, the Mosher Foundation and an anonymous family, who have each cumulatively given $250,000 each to the Engineering Academy. They have chosen to name the machine shop after Mr. Shaheer. And the name, as it would read, would be the Amir Abu Shaheer Fabrication Laboratory in honor of the founder of the Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy. Mr. Shaheer is honored to have his efforts recognized in this capacity, and Principal Sean Carey is also very supportive of this request. The machine shop, which I know many of you have spent time in, is the envy of many in local industry. It has eight lays, four mills, and two routers, not computer routers, the other kind of routers. And for those who understand what this means, there are also CNC, or Computer Numerical Control, lays, mills, and routers. And for those who understand what this means, there are also CNC or Computer Numerical Control lays, mills and routers as well, which is really very remarkable for a high school lab. So on behalf of my board, I'd just like to say in conclusion, I'd like to thank the school district and all of you for your ongoing and continued support of the Engineering Academy, which this year reached its full cohort, as you know, of 400 students, more than half of whom are young women and now represents close to 20% of the Dos Pueblos High School student enrollment. We all know we couldn't be here and we couldn't have this facility without the passion and the extraordinary efforts of Mr. Shaheer, of Amir Abu Shaheer. So I would respectfully request that you approve this naming opportunity and I'm welcome to answer any questions if you have any.
Ms. Parker?
Well, I don't think you could say enough about Mr. Abu Shaheer and what he has done in essentially creating this from the ground up. And I'd say at the very least that we could do, it is an amazing space and you walk in there and are always blown away and I think it's fabulous that this be named after him, so I definitely support this idea. And I will make a motion, I'm going to pull this forward up here, that we approve the naming of the machine shop at the Ealing Center after Mr. Abu Shaheer.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried with great gratitude and to you, Ms. Deacon.
Thank you.
Thank you for continuing your involvement.
And I would also like to mention there are still more naming opportunities available. We have the computer lab, the student shop and the new mechatronics design lab, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you're lucky, you can go home. Approval, item H2, approval of the third extension and modification of Superintendent's Employment Agreement. It's basically a one-year extension for Dr. Cash.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the third extension and modification of Superintendent's Employment Agreement.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, just that I'll point out that it is essentially just, the only change to the contract is that it now ends on June 30th of 2017.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Dr. Cash, congratulations, we have you for another three years.
Well, thank you very much.
And we look forward to it.
It's a pleasure to be here.
It's been a great, great time having you as our superintendent. We appreciate all the effort you go through. It's a day-to-day job that in many cases is thankless, but I think you love it, so that makes a huge, that makes a huge difference. H3, acceptance of the 2013-2014 Annual Report on Statutory School Fees, Developer Fees for the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a annual document that you see pro forma. We have David Hetjung here. If there's any questions, it's fairly straightforward. What will be wonderful is that during this next school year, not this one, the 14-15, but the 15-16 school year, you'll get a really great summary document and that will, actually you're going to see kind of a preview of it because that'll be part of the discussion we have when you have the conversation about the long-term maintenance, repair and renovation schedule. So, Mr. Hetjung?
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Government code sections require that we divulge to the public annually within 180 days of the end of the fiscal year, which ends June 30th, so we've made that with this meeting. The report on how we've expended fees, how many fees we've collected, the amount of fees and what we intend to do with them in the future. And this is a summary report for that. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them and I have any details, if you have any specifics about what was expended for anything in particular.
Any questions? I just had two simple ones. I was curious, under the, what you still have funds for the following, one of them was Santa Barbara High School Mad Academy Consulting and Accounting Services. Developer fees we pay for accounting services?
What we had to do was we submit a report to the state and we have typically Julie Avnet of Spectrum Management submit that report, so that would have been an expense of last year.
I mean, I guess my main question was it, developer fees for accounting services? What kind of accounting services for Mad Academy?
It was, it was the report on how we expended the fees. Because we received matching funds from the state of 50% for that project, we had to report to them all the categories in state format of how those fees were expended and Spectrum Management Solutions we used for all of our state reporting for all of our projects that receive state matching funds. Most of the time she is paid from bond funds. This project did not utilize bond funds, it utilized a state grant, developer fees and fundraising.
Thank you. And I presume the consulting fees, which was a rather large amount, that has to do with all of the different studies we have going on now?
Correct. If you're talking about teleconstruction management, they are funded out of three different categories. They're funded out of bond funds for the projects they do for construction management. They're funded out of developer fees for the work they do in association with the facility's master plan and they're funded out of deferred maintenance for the work they are currently doing and developing the deferred maintenance schedules that the board has asked for.
Thank you, Mr. Hetjung, I really appreciate your knowledge that you've accumulated for us.
And the list, the list of future funds does not tie the board to that list. That is a list that is put together in conjunction with discussions throughout the year of the superintendent and assistant superintendent of Business Services as to what they would like to see happen in the future and that is just a summary of things we've done in the past and things we hope to do in the future, but it no by means ties the board to say that you can't adjust that list.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I will move to accept the 2013-14 Annual Report on Statutory School Fees for the Santa Barbara Unified School District.
I will second that.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. H4, approval of revised classified job description, webmaster administrative analyst. Dr. Cash?
Dr. Christensen is here to present that.
Good evening, Mr. Heron, board members and Dr. Cash. Tonight before you is a revised job description and reclassification of our webmaster slash administrative analyst. As we look at the duties of that position, they have expanded exponentially, they've become far more complex and then originally the job was designed to do, therefore we revised the job description and we reclassified it and my purpose in being here tonight is to request that you approve the job description and the redesignation of the webmaster position.
Thank you, Dr. Christensen. Board, Ms. Limone?
I just have a general question. Since we just approved the Edilio contract, what is it?
Edlio.
Edlio, sorry. Contract, how will this realignment of job description align to that or not align at all? Are they two separate, they never talk? I'm just curious.
Mr. Rickman can answer that question.
The position will work with sites to make sure that we're using Edlio like we hope. They'll continue to update our district website, they'll be responsible for making sure our videos are up, all of our documents that the board requests are there. So the job is not changing much because of Edlio.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion? A question, Ms. Parker?
Just a quick question in the sense that I feel like we, and I completely support this reclassification. I think it's probably long overdue given how much we've expected out of our website now and as a communication tool and as a tool for transparency and professional development and everything. And I only question whether this position is enough, given what we need from our digital presence. And so I'm, I think at some point in the future, I would like to have some clarification whether or not just having one person in this role is enough or if there needs to be some sort of assistant just to get all the information onto our website that we need to have on. So that's kind of a question for the future, but in this particular case, I will move to approve the revised classified job description for the webmaster administrative analyst.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. H5, this is a minor one, approval of Santa Barbara Unified School District and Santa Barbara Teachers Association Agreement for 2014 to 2017. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Lots of great work was done by parties. This was a complete redrafting of our three-year agreement, which happens every three years. It was a very collaborative process. We met over many, many months for many, many hours. And I want to thank and acknowledge the Santa Barbara Teachers Association negotiating team. John Houchen, the president, is in the audience tonight. Ken Stevens was the chief negotiator, along with John Belitho, teacher at Santa Barbara High School, Helen Murdock, one of our technology literacy coaches, Lisa Manau, who is a teacher at Cleveland Elementary School, Kristin Corpus, who is a teacher at Harding Elementary School and the CTA Field Representative Cindy Heller. I'd also like to acknowledge our district team as well. Margaret Christensen did a fantastic job in facilitating that. Meg Jete, our assistant superintendent for business services. Dr. Bendrotti, our assistant superintendent for secondary education. Casey Kilgore, our principal at Franklin and David Ortiz, our principal at Locklina Junior High School and myself, we're on the management team. No one side gets everything they want in any negotiation and in fact, many will say the best result from a negotiation is when both sides lead the table a little hungry. And I can say that probably happened this year. But we put together as a team in a very collaborative way, a lot of wonderful changes for our district. And one of the most important changes, I believe, is the 3% increase. Our teachers are working harder than I've ever seen teachers work in my entire career in education. I've never seen experienced, heck, when I was a teacher, I didn't work as hard as they're working now, just to be very frank. It is unreal what we are expecting our teachers to do. And while I know and everyone knows that more money doesn't necessarily equate to better performance, but I can tell you that it's well-deserved and that I'm hopeful and thankful that we will continue our collaborative efforts as we move forward to work in the best interest of children. And with that, you have the modified contract before you and Dr. Christensen or myself could answer any questions if you had any.
Mr. Houchen, do you have anything to add?
Do not, but thank you so much.
Okay. You know, just for the public, this document is about 70 pages long and that doesn't include a lot of attachments. So it's quite a hefty document that's been negotiated between the school district and the union through negotiating teams, which is not a public activity. But I want to assure you that I have gone through every page and I'm sure my fellow board members have gone through every page. It's not something we can talk about or discuss or change. The teachers have voted on it and our negotiating team has voted on it and I can tell you that it, that the primary goal is students. Our students being treated correctly by our staffs and by administration. Changes have been made to do a better job educating children and you can't ask for much more than that. And I really thank your negotiating team and your staff, Dr. Christensen, who worked so hard on it. It's, if you get a chance to go on the website and take a look at it, it's a document that's very well-written, lot of, lot of changes for the next three years. It's a total rewrite and it's very, very good, so thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion to approve the Santa Barbara Unified School District and Santa Barbara Teachers Association Agreement for 2014-2017.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Again, thank you very much, Mr. Houchen, to your staff and your team, job well done. We love our teachers. H6, positive certification of first interim financial report for fiscal year 2015-2014-2015.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Another document.
Another large document. We're going to go page by page through this one. I want, I want to acknowledge again the great work of Ms. Jete and her entire business services division, particularly her fiscal staff, who have really worked hard. I also want to acknowledge that they came in, they were here at odd hours of the day and night working on getting this done in a timely manner and really want to acknowledge that hard work and thank Ms. Jete for putting together another great report that I believe is easy to read, easy to understand as much as we can make it with the state accounting code system still in place for our public and our community. And with that, I'll ask Ms. Jete to lead the board through the discussion.
Thank you. And I appreciate your comments and I will pass that, pass those on to my staff. And I just want to let everyone know, this is our first interim on MUNIS, our new financial system. So it was doubly challenging to get into it and make sure everything was right and so staff did a great job on that. Santa Barbara Unified School District staff has prepared the fiscal year 2014-15 first interim report for the board's review and approval. While the state's recommended minimum reserve has been met, Santa Barbara Unified still faces the challenges of increasing its fund balance in the light of the passing of Proposition 2 on November 4th, 2014, which we lovingly call the Rainy Day Fund. However, the contribution to this rainy day fund reserve are likely to happen, are unlikely to happen for several years and are likely to be infrequent. All of the following must be true so that the contribution to this rainy day reserve account occurs. So all Proposition 98 maintenance factors amounts outstanding as of 2013 to 2021, which is over $6.6 billion for the state of California, must have been paid to the schools. These are all the back funds that we have been decreased over these years. Capital gains taxes must be greater than 8% of the state general fund revenue. Proposition 98 must be calculated using test one. This test one has only been used in '88, '89, '11, '12 and '12-13, only three times since 1988. So if all the conditions are met and the transfer is made to this account, the Santa Barbara Unified School District, like others, will not be able to carry a reserve amount greater than double its recommended requirement, which is 3%, so a total of 6%. So we feel pretty confident that it's going to take a lot to have that happen and so we will plug away at trying to build our reserves. So we'll move on to the beef of this document. On page two is just more information on local control funding formula. For those of you who'd like to read this, it's riveting and I encourage you to do it, this will be posted on the website. So we're going to move on to the unrestricted revenues, which is our operating side of the budget. And first of all, we went up 1.5 million in LCF increase and is mostly due to the large attendance, the growth we had this year. We're projecting about 302 ADA increase and this is due to 392 enrollment increase in high school, 82 enrollment in elementary and a loss of about 162 enrollment in the junior high. We don't know where those high schoolers came from. Usually we can project pretty well kindergarten because of the percentage of county births, live births five years ago and now with TK, we have a pretty good idea, but this, this really came out of nowhere. Still haven't really figured out where the kids came from out of high school. In federal revenues, which is not very typical, we get federal revenues on the unrestricted side of the budget, but this is MAF funding from 2011-12. It's how far back we are on our federal funding for medical administrative activities. Another increase is due to the release of prior... Another increase is due to the release of prior year's mandated cost reimbursement. This is outside of the block grant, so we were fortunate enough to get some more mandated cost reimbursement from years and years ago. And also a slight increase from the amount of lottery that people are purchasing and are giving to the schools. And our local revenue, the E-rate reimbursement, the increase is due to E-rate reimbursement and a slight increase from our parcel, to our parcel tax. All of the, all of the salaries that you will see here do not have the 3%, of course, that the board just approved, because they weren't, it was not approved when we created the budget. So we will show later on how that will affect the ending fund balance, but this is the differences, we're going to point out the differences between adopted budget and first interim. The increases in salaries are due to the following. Increase in staff due to the increase in enrollment. We hired floating custodians, which is, we're in dire need of custodians. Overtime of high school and assistance to, with enrollment. Increase in human resource clerical LVN, split between special ed and unrestricted. What we did is we took the portion of special ed children and the general and public, and we allocated our nurses and our LVNs that way to more represent our population. The decrease in health and welfare due to the Affordable Care Act and the increase, or the decrease in the state teachers' retirement system, which the state had said we were going to be paying about 9.25%, we ended up being paid 8.8%. So we reduced the STIRS contribution. The increase for books and supplies, additional lottery and parcel tax, and the service operation is mainly due to the property and liability insurance, land speed, and the Jive contract. So on the unrestricted other financing sources, the other outgoing, which didn't change much, but I wanted to point out that this is the funds that we used to give, and we still do, give to Fund 13, which is our food service program, which used to be on the revenue limit a long time ago. When we were funded by revenue limit, we were allocating funds over there to the food service, and we continued to do that. Also, we also have to transfer Santa Barbara Charter Fund, the parcel tax, and the class size reduction. That's how they are funded, they're kind of funded through us. And then our special reserve for Fund 17 for the replacement of the turf fields. Okay, other uses, tax, this is where we move the parcel tax over for Adelante and Peabody since they are not on our financial system, this is the way we do it. And then we'll get into the contributions in a minute when I get on to the restricted side of the budget. So overall, down at the page of five, we are deficit spending in the amount of about 62, or 623,000. So here's what I want to talk a little bit about, about how everything falls into place. We started out with a beginning fund balance from 2013-14 of 7.5 million. Our results of operation are about 623,000, which leaves us an ending fund balance of 6.9 million. Our special reserve fund has 4.5 million in it, which leaves us adjusted fund balance of 11.4 million. We have, we are allocating, or we commit 462 towards our electric carts and our field replacement for the San Marcos turf that we'll probably need in maybe about seven years from now, seven to 12 years. So then again, our projected ending fund balance is lower to 11 million. Our reserve percentage is 8.2, well above our 3% recommended. However, well then when we add in or subtract out the adjustments due to the contract settlement for the teachers, it's 1.6 million. I also, we have not settled for any other units, but I thought it was important that we take a look at how the ending fund balance would be if we did do that, or if you did approve that. And that is estimated to be about 864,000. So revived, revised projected ending fund balance with settlement is 8.5% or six, I mean, sorry, 8.5 million or 6.37%. Now, if you would take out our special reserve account, which is Fund 17, and we remove the $4 million, we're still at 3.24% above the 3% recommended reserve. Any questions on that? Restricted activity. You may remember that we also, we always budget on our adopted budget a 10% reduction in federal funds because the federal government does not release their budget until September, so we never know what we're, what's going to happen, if they're going to cut it, or, so we just are precautionary and budget for 10% less than what we get. Our other state revenue is the net reduction of the state funding of AB 602, which is our special ed funding, and increase in after-school education, which is our ACIS program. Other local revenue, the donations are not budgeted, all the site donations are not budgeted at adopted budget because we don't have any promissory notes from our donors, so we wait until they get, they all come in, and then we book the budget. So that's one of the big reasons why that goes up 3/4 of a million. Salaries and benefits, pretty consistent with the site donation accounts and reclassification of our paraeducators, additional days for nurses, and 50% of the tech employees for special education, LVN working out of class, and additional paraeducators carry over allocated, and carry over from allocation of the common core funds. Books and supplies are up a little bit because of the restricted lottery, so we pretty much budget, everything that we get, we will spend in the restricted side of the budget. Services and operating, increase in transportation services, special education settlements, non-public school placement, legal increase, and services across all of our donation accounts. So the contribution has gone up 1.2. About 100,000 of that was in transportation. Even though it's, transportation is no longer on the restricted side of the budget, I like to point out that we do spend about 2.4 million in transportation. We're grossly underfunded, again, from the state. I was at the CBO symposium down in Newport Beach in mid-November, and they're really working hard to get some more money for transportation. So we're hoping that, that's, this is what they said, that they will cover 50% of the cost, which is a lot more than we're getting now, so. Part of the reason why the, the encroachment went up is we're 100% pay-as-you-go from the SULPA now at the county, and we pay 100% of our costs for every child that attends the county programs. We also had a reduction, and I'm, I'm pretty sure this may go up a little bit due to our ADA, but we had a reduction in our funding, and this is due to the relationship of the entire county. You know, when you have 63,000 kids in your county, and you get funded for special ed in a, as it per ADA, not special ed ADA, but total ADA, if one or two districts go up a lot, then the pot gets smaller. The same amount of money is there, but there are more kids to distribute it. So we got a little bit more because we went up in ADA, but we also had other districts that went up. Santa Maria Bonita went up, and so the pot gets spread out a little thinner. So we end up for first interim for the restricted side, we're anticipating about a $362,000 ending fund balance, and that is with also figuring the, the two union agreements, or the one union agreement and the possible others. Page 10 is just-
One question on, on that contribution account worth a million 281, 194 more expenditure.
Mm-hmm.
That's divided between special ed and transportation, or would you say that's all special ed?
Most of it is special ed, because we had a reduction of about $600,000 in the funding, so that was almost half of that. And then we had a couple of MPS placements, which are non-public school placements, and a settlement.
Thank you.
Page 10. This just is a draft, I mean, a graph of the reserve and net ending fund balance. As you can see, it's wrong.
I was wondering. I don't see any red on there.
I've looked at this graph a lot of times, and I just noticed it's wrong.
There's no red.
The special reserve is not in there. So, yeah, that'll be fixed. So there is special reserve funds in there, and they will probably go up pretty close to between '12 and '13, and '13 and '14. The restricted side, you can see that there's no white on the graph on the out years, projected out years of '15, '16, and '16, '17, and that's because we always project that we will use up, we will spend every dime we get for the restricted side of the budget. Page 11. This I really want to keep in the forefront of the two retirement systems. We have the STIRS, which is the state teachers' retirement system, and the public employees' retirement system, which is PERS for the classified. I want to show you, and you saw this again in adopted budget, that they're anticipating that both PERS and STIRS will go up, and by the time 2021, we'll be paying 39% in pensions. So again, when I was at the CBO symposium, I also learned that everybody, I believe, from all sides are trying to get the governor to give us funding outside of LCFF, because even though our revenue is coming in from LCFF, this is taking up. Anywhere, they were stating that it was going to take up 25 to 44% of the new money coming in. So we have to watch this, and anytime you can shed some light on to anybody that will listen to you up in Sacramento, we need to, you know, let them know how we feel about this. So I thought it was important also to show that, you know, average total employer compensation for employees, you have on the next page, you have an, an average teacher employee, you have classified and certificate in it, and you can see that the extras that the employer pays for each employee is about eight, now this will vary if someone doesn't get health and welfare, or they do get health, but for the teachers, it's 18, and for the classified, it's 19. And this will go up if we don't get, it will go up for the, because of the percentage of the unfunded PERS and STIRS. So items to consider regarding future funds and demands on revenue. The state's personal income tax for anyone earning over 250,000 will expire in 1920, 2019 and 2020. Increases on sales tax, sales and use tax of a quarter percent will also expire in '16, '17. No plans for statewide bonds, so we may have to prepare to help our facilities out, out of the general fund, and what I mentioned before, the PERS and STIRS. And also, our parcel tax is going, will expire on 2016-17. So just a couple of items that are coming up in the near future that we have to be cautious of, and which may slow our funding down in LCFF a little bit. Our enrollment and our ADA history projections, I just want to point out one thing that, as I said earlier, are, you can see the jump in enrollment from 1314, from 4,204 to 14,519. That was a huge jump for us. So the approximate ADA, I'm estimating to be about 13,755. So the next year, I'm anticipating that we do decrease a little bit, and, but we are always prior year funding, so that's why you see the attendance or the ADA being the same in 1415 as in 1516. So we get to take the greater of the two. Our unduplicated pupil count, last year was about 54%. This year, my estimate, we went out and did a really big campaign to get people to, who qualified, to sign up. I was really counting on a jump. I budgeted for a jump, but we still don't have the final numbers, so you may see an adjustment at second interim for this. Lottery revenues went up slightly. And our multi-year projections, we have, I have projected out the 1415, obviously, and then it has also the total projected cost of the settlement for both sides of the budget, unrestricted and restricted. And you can see, we have a 6.39%. We have, we meet our 3% reserve level in every year after that, and we meet it whether we have the 4 million in there or not, which is what we need to keep on plugging for. And then I want to point out that we are in the second year of bringing back our routine restricted maintenance crew, and you'll see that $576,000 in 1516 under other adjustments. We kept revenue pretty flat except for the LCFF funding, and that is what, is that, that's the projection from the state and the Department of Finance. And the next two pages is-
Can I ask a question on page 14?
Sure.
The 576,000, that's in 1516. Did we do any in 1415?
Yes, we did. It's already included in the budget.
It's included in the-
It was a two-year plan.
Okay. And we want to get to the 2008, 2009 level. How close are we to that?
Well, we hired 50% of our staff back, and we will, by 1516, we'll get the other half.
Okay, good.
So we're working on it.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. It's important to us to keep our facilities, especially how we've done really nicely with our bonds. So the next page is just a summary of the LCFF calculator. And what you really want to look at is, you know, for your leisure, is on the total funding. You will see 107,643,892, which is under the 1415 total funding, and you'll see that in our unrestricted side of our budget in 811, which is our total LCFF funding. And I just want to show you how it all ties in, and then you will see it also on your multi-year projections for the next two years out. And then the calculator, this is what they call the BAS calculator, or the FICMET calculator, sorry. It's very small, but it's about a, you know, 14-tab Excel spreadsheet that basically all feeds into this sheet. And so you can see that on 1415, our target amount is 123,4926774. That's in the first full purple line. And so every year, we're going to get a little chunk of what's due to us to help us get back to our 2007-8 funding. So that's where we're expected to be in 2021. And the rest of it is the, all the other funds, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Board? Ms. Parker?
Well, I will just say that it is, you know, it continues to be such a relief and a pleasure to see the numbers going up in the multi-year projections, since we had so many bad years. And I think, you know, and maybe it's a good thing, having experienced this board for so long and sitting through being burned, we were, you know, in previous years, we were, we were also in declining enrollment. So it's great to be in either flat or increasing enrollment, but, you know, a recession doesn't signal itself long ahead of time. And so I appreciate the continued caution, and also appreciate that we could suddenly be being deflated when we didn't ever expect it. But thank you, I appreciate the hard work that everybody's done on it, and I, you know, will keep my- And I, you know, we'll keep my fingers crossed that the economy will continue to hold. Thank you.
Me too.
Anyone else? Ms. Lamone?
So thank you. And I would agree, I think this is more positive, maybe not as positive as we'd like, in our dream world, would like to see, but more positive than we've seen in, at least in the last few years. And I also want to say that I know that the California School Board Association Legislative Committee, which I'm a part of, is very aware of the STIRS contribution and also the reserve cap. And those are very big-ticket items that, there's just a lot of state awareness about that. So I think, you know, it's not just, is it CASBO?
CASBO.
CASBO. It's also CSBA that's thinking about.
And SSC. They're all working on it.
And so Zaxa.
Yep.
I know CTA is working on the STIRS contribution.
So these are all, these are all organizations, just, we just threw out a lot of letters out there. These are all organizations that we all belong to in some way, that inform and contribute to our understanding of what's happening at the statewide level.
Do I have a motion to approve item H6?
I move to approve a positive certification of first interim financial report for 2014, 2015.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Meg and your team.
Thank you.
Fantastic. H7, approval of Citizens Oversight Committee appointment.
Mr. Herron, we'll call Ms. Kiani to come forward. We have one applicant.
Good evening. We have one applicant who is willing to serve on two committees. So it's a Mr., you have his information, I believe, Joaquin Becerra. And of the three, we basically have three openings that would fit for him. One is on Measure Q, there's a seat for a tax preparer. We have been doing outreach, but have not been successful at this time to find a tax preparer, someone who is involved in a tax organization. On Measure R, we have a parent's seat and a taxpayer's seat available. So since Mr. Becerra is willing to serve on two committees, my suggestion would be that he goes on to Measure Q and sits in the tax preparer seat for the balance of that term, which is one year, and that he also be placed as, in the parent's seat on the Measure R Bond Oversight Committee, which is a two-year position.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one question.
Ms. Edelson?
So since he's not a tax preparer, but he's in that seat, if anybody were to come along who would be that occupation?
As I understand it from legal counsel, is the person who sits in that seat fills it out for that year, and then you go out again, looking again for that particular, the person who fits that profile.
Okay, so, but we're not in any violation by putting somebody there that's not?
Not according to what legal counsel has advised.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
H8, approval, application for fundraising activity for the shade structure replacement project at Santa Barbara High School.
Well, Mr. Herron, we got, it looks like quite a team from Santa Barbara High School, ready to come forward. I'll ask Dave Hetjung to introduce the item.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board. Last school year came to our attention that there were some structural deficiencies with the shade structure that sits next to the greenhouse at Santa Barbara High School. It was such a state that we advised Dr. Cash that we needed to demolish the structure to prevent anybody from being injured. The district committed to rebuild the structure at minimal cost, since this was not a project that made the bond fund approval list. The site representatives of the people that used the facility, the principal, and Ron Pelucci, and I all met. And it was decided that they would like to fundraise for an enhanced project. And after numerous meetings, and I guess the short version is getting us all on the same page, we're at this point before you to ask permission to fundraise. The foundation for Santa Barbara High School is on board to serve as the primary fundraising arm. And Mr. Pelucci and the district have worked very well cooperatively in the past for construction with the Matt Academy. We have a track record of working well together, and I'm sure we will in the future. And be glad to turn this over to Principal John Beckio for a presentation, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. We'd love to hear from the Paul Harris Award winner from the Rotary Club of Santa Barbara, the highest award, the highest award they could give. I know Rotary is very proud of you, and we're very proud of you.
Thank you. That must have gone out in E! News today. So as you see this, the structure here, Dave pretty much gave you the backdrop on this. And we do have students that are working in that area every year. And it does serve our, both our AP Environmental Science class and our Horticulture classes. The conversations that we began having last spring with Ron and Stacy Pelice and Jose Caballero really led us to bringing in, the Pelice family brought in an architect and came to a design that would, as you see here, would be a great addition to our campus in that area. The total cost of the project is in your, I believe you got our proposal in there. It's a half a million dollar project. And we do have a lead donation from the Pelice family for $250,000. So we will be fundraising the balance of that, an additional $250,000. At this time, we wanted to open it up for questions that you might have of the foundation, or the Pelice family, or myself.
Ms. Parker?
I'll start off with, I think it looks like a fabulous project, and what was there was absolutely derelict and dangerous. And, and so it's, you know, I think that this would be a fantastic addition to Santa Barbara High School. My only concern is, I do feel like the, the foundation is, you know, very ambitious and doing lots of great things. But I guess my only worry is, is it taking on too much? So I don't know if you can address that, Mr. Beckio, if you have any concerns about that at all?
We actually, as the foundation, we talked about this, and I, the answer that I would give you is no, I don't believe so in this case. Ron actually sits on our board for the stadium project. And they actually, the Pelice family will be leading the charge on the fundraising effort for the $250,000. And so there will be a little bit of staff time that the foundation gives to the project to, when the money, when the donations come in, they'll be tracking all those donations. And so that will be pretty much the involvement of the foundation, and then the Pelices are going to take the lead on raising the $250,000. So in this case, I think it's a great concern, you know, it's a valid concern. But in this case, it's mitigated by the fact that we won't be having a lot of crossover between the fundraising project for the stadium and the shade structure. And we have Ron, who sits on the board for the stadium project. So I think he's going to be in close communication with Katie on, on funders and who we're, you know, who we're asking for donations from.
Okay, thank you.
Is the $17,000 from the developer fees going to be allocated to this?
At this time, yes. The district paid out of developer fees for the demolition of the structure. And our initial estimate was that we could have rebuilt a minimal structure for $15,000 with a $2,000 contingency. However, that would have just been chain link, poles, and fabric, which is a world of difference from what you see before you here on the, on the sketch.
If I recall correctly, and Ms. Kanyana, or Mr. He, you can tell me. Is this the site that we took the TV crew through when we were promoting the bond issue in 2010? And the hanging light fixture coming down from the ceiling?
I don't remember.
With old dilapidated furniture and?
There was, there was some, there was some furniture that was kind of half indoors, half outdoors, in a partially covered area, yes.
And we focused the TV cameras on it?
I believe, I believe you're talking about the same area, yes.
To encourage voters to vote it.
Yes.
So I'd have no problem in the future, it's just off the top of my head, if, if there's ever a dollar left of the bond money, since we use this to focus the bond issue. I wouldn't be unhappy to see if there's someplace down the line, we might be able to help. That's just me.
That would be strictly a board decision, and I'm sure that there's many people in the room that would welcome that.
Well, actually, you, there will, looks like there will be a balance of money that's available, and you will be given that opportunity to seek, as a collective, this project as one of your priorities.
That hanging light bulb, you know, is in the pay, I think it can go under the pay, but maybe News Hawk, it might be in there. Or Daily News at the time, or whatever. Ms. Edelson?
Am I understanding correctly, is this like as you're heading down the road towards Cannon Perdido on your left?
Yes, so if you, if you head down the road towards Cannon Perdido and take a left into the parking area where the gardener shed is, and then you go further down the road, and there's Vada that's on the right. And on the left is where the garden is, and the, the proposed shade structure would be there.
All right.
Dr. Paz?
You know, I think it's a good testament of the community you have in Santa Barbara High School that, you know, people are so ambitious to take on this, along with the stadium. And I think it's a great reflection of that willingness and sort of positive perspective of doing this. The one thing, not related to the project, is I'm fully supportive of, but just thinking as a school district, when we just had a small discussion about maintenance within the last agenda item, and looking at this is, is another sort of piece of evidence to continue to emphasize the need for maintenance. Because things like this, I don't want to see the investment of $500,000 look like it currently does right now in 20, 25 years from now. I would love to see it look the way it looks right now, and continue to look that way. So I think maintenance, again, you know, using this as an example is something we need to emphasize in our school district. We have a lot of projects, we have a lot of things to do, but these are things that need to be cared for, like a living thing. And, and so I hope that we take that in consideration when we look at these projects as well. And as a school district, to continue to emphasize that, not just the project, but to look at it in terms of maintenance as well. So, thank you.
Ms. Parker?
Can I ask, Mr. Tedeschi, is there more that you could show?
Picture-wise?
No, I just, in terms of, I, I'm having technical difficulties right now. So my question was about things like, you know, talking to the public about timelines and, and what you're thinking.
If I can speak for Ron, and please come up if I misspeak. An architect has been engaged to do the preliminary drawings, the schematic drawings, and pre-design services. Soils engineer has been selected, and we are in the design process now. And, and so this will go, be a regular project that would go through design process, Division of State Architect approval, come back to the board for a, a word of contract and construction. And the timeline will be based on how long it takes to get through Division of State Architect, and how quickly this, the fundraising is successful. If I misspoke, Ron, please tell me.
And may I assume that the DSA is going to be fairly slow?
This is not a complicated project. It would not, it is not structurally complicated, and there, thanks to a nearby elevator, handicapped accessibility and accessibility to the area is relatively straightforward. And so it should not be a complicated review by Division of State Architect.
All right, famous last words, but I, hopefully you haven't jinxed anything there, Mr. Hetjung. Thank you.
Ms. Lamone?
Did I actually hear a year, a timeline, like what was, did I, I mean, I heard?
No.
But what was the time? Expected, I mean, we, we get it, we get DSA, it might be a little slow.
If, this design could be at the Division of State Architect, probably within three to four months, easily, very easily, depending on, on how quick the architect works, it could be there within 60 days, depending on how quickly the design goes. And then, then hopefully by the time that it comes out, it, it would be ready for construction. You could see this happening at this summer, if everything goes very well.
So if everything goes really well, summer of 2015?
Yes.
Could be when we could see this construction. Okay, thank you.
I think that's the Peluce family's plan.
Yeah, we'd hope to be into Division of State Architect, hopefully by?
I see two thumbs up and two fingers crossed, great.
Well, the architect submits to Division of State Architect, and then they review it. And everything depends on what they come back with, with comments of what else they may want. And so the more we can get tied down before that, the less questions they have, the easier it goes through, and the shorter the timeframe. But it would not be unrealistic to see activity there this summer.
Great, thank you. And I'd just like to thank both foundations, because there's two foundations that are involved in this project. And I think this speaks to the generosity of our community to support our schools, but also our continuous need in the area of facilities and maintenance. I mean, this just doesn't end. I feel every month, we're having really hard conversations, and the need is much greater than what we have. So I know that we'll continue to explore how we tackle some of these problems, because as President Herron just described, a light bulb hanging with old furniture just doesn't seem to cut it when it comes to quality education for students, so, thanks.
What is the threshold of fundraising that needs to be met before the first shovel goes in the dirt?
Well, I was just going to answer, this is my answer, not Dave's, he might have a different answer than, than myself. But we're actually going to start, we will, we won't start until we have the $500,000.
Okay. Because there's a threshold, isn't there, Mr. Hetjung?
There is a threshold in the board policy where the board can approve the construction based on the fundraiser's presentation to the board on how they are going to fundraise for the balance of the project in order to meet the timeline necessary to pay the contractors.
Thank you.
Can I move to approve the application for fundraising activity for the shade structure replacement project at Santa Barbara High School?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I would invite any of you to come out, and we could show you the plans, show you the space. I'd be happy to do that at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the Peluce family.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to H9, Board Action Student Discipline and Education Code for Case Number 20141503.
In Case 20141503, I move to approve the stipulated agreement for a suspended expulsion for one school year ending June 2015.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. H10, Board Action Student Discipline and Education Code, Case Number 201415-10.
In Case 201415-10, I move that we approve the suspended expulsion for one school year ending June 2015, with the understanding that the student will attend Quetzal, and that that will be the sole campus that that student will be able to go on to.
Or any other non-district campus?
Or any other non-district campus.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lamone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, we're at the conference item I1, and as I mentioned, since the open, open alternative school is represented here en masse, if, after they're finished with the single plan, I'd like to, in deference to their time, go to I6, because they also are here on that item. There's no objection. Ms. Parker?
Well, my concern on I6 is that OAS may not be the only entity out there that's interested in what's being presented. And so if there are people that are thinking that it's going to be last on the agenda, that maybe if we want them together, they should both go at the end of the agenda instead of the beginning.
So you're thinking there might be people coming?
There might be people that want to listen. There's certainly other, you know, communities that are not related to OAS that are very interested in their district transfers. So that's just a question.
Okay, I mean, we will then go to the presentation of single plans for OAS. And unfortunately, we'll listen to an hour of discussion on other very important things that might help you.
They are important.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herron. Thank you very much, Mr. Herron. We'll ask Ms. Millian to come forward, our principal of OAS, who I'll just say is doing a fabulous job. We're happy to have her there. And she gets the special show that no other principal got. And the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much. Good evening to Board President and our Vice President. Congratulations on your new appointments, and to the board members, and to Dr. Cash and administrators, and my OAS team. We got parents here and we have board member and teacher and our, our office staff, so thank you for being here tonight. So, okay, wow, I didn't know I was gonna have it projected up there, that's pretty exciting. What I wanted to highlight, I don't have a lot of time to speak and I want to highlight a few things for you tonight. And I may have you go to that place in the, my plan, or I may just, we'll see how that goes, okay? So I want to, as you know, it is our, it's our work to look at the LCAP, to look at the priorities and to be looking at how we're supporting our students. And there are many different priorities that we are now addressing and looking at. And I want to talk a little bit about the infrastructure and the work that I did starting up at OAS, and a little bit also about a couple priorities in particular that are a focus for me and our, and our community this year. So the first thing that I'd like to talk about is the infrastructure, school safety and cleanliness. And, you know, one of the first things that I, I took on, and I talked to Dr. Cash, I said, can I start immediately? Because I didn't want to go in and, and do some house cleaning and help the, the staff there to do some of that. And so happily, I, to report, and you've probably seen, if you've seen in our, and we can move down Conrad, if you want to move down to, I don't know, forward. I'm gonna talk a little bit about, yeah, keep going, to priority, priority one here. And you can go a little further, I think. But I mentioned here that we did satisfy 100% the compliance with the Williams Act, Sufficient Materials Survey. So that was big and I think wonderful, and we came out as, as one of the schools with an exemplary facility. So I'm happy to report that, and as we know, having a clean house and having things in order makes a big difference. So, and there were no teacher misassignments, anything of that nature. The other piece is the technology at our school and assessing the needs for, where are we at with technology, what are our needs? And as I did an assessment, I realized that we have a lot of outdated hardware. And that was one of the first things I took a peek at. And as a result, with a lot of the new strategic plan and the priorities of our district are to be on par with other schools. So technology is a, is a real focus for us this year. And this is getting into, this doesn't really apply, this is looking more at our, the, the, what we're doing to address our, well, I guess it is, it's our action date, okay, it's our first priority. So, back to the technology piece. So I want to thank the district for their support in helping us to acquire, to purchase a Chromebook cart. We have a lot of antiquated equipment, so we're, we're e-wasting that and moving on and we're going to be, and we're going to, we're in the process of getting a 46 Chromebook cart, and 10 of those will be available for our teachers also. And this is gonna help us tremendously. We still are lacking the Apple TVs in two of our rooms, that is the TV itself in the Apple box. We, there's some things we need to bring our school up to date in that capacity, and because we did grow our school by two, two teachers, we hired two new teachers this year. So those two classrooms have been modified somewhat to, they're, they're now classrooms, they, one was a multi-root use space and the other is now, they're both classrooms. So that is, those are, those are areas with regards to infrastructure, technology, that I'm, I'm excited about in terms of bringing us up to a different level with regards to the tech. There's two priorities also that I want to highlight, that I think are very important for us going forward this year. And that, one of that is the parent involvement piece and, and also pupil achievement. So in terms of parent involvement, one of the areas that needs to be developed is our involvement with, not only in our own school site committees, but also at the district level. And so we are going to be, we're working on developing an ELAC at our school. We've had an increase in our English language population, which I wanted to share with you. We went from 11% to 20, I want to say, what, 23, 21.3%? And of our inner district transfers, half of those students, half of the eight, the four are English learners. So I wanted to give you that information also. So developing ELAC, creating opportunities for our parents to come and learn about the other district committees, that's something I'm going to be providing, because there is, there's the Parent Advisory Council, there's our Special Education Advisory Council, LCAP, there, as you know, there are a variety of committees that we need to have a voice at and representation. And the other is giving, one of the ways that I hope to do this is through my own communication and also through, I've started a, a monthly time where parents can come and meet with me and where we can talk about any issues, talk about how they can be involved, and I can be present with them and support them in their, in helping them with their, with the venues or the avenues that they can get involved. The other is the pupil achievement. And with this new technology that we now have, that we're acquiring, we will now be able to implement some of the, the different data types of, the SRI, Scholastic Reading Inventory, our STAR reading, which works with the Accelerated Reader Program. And also our school, this will help us to collect literacy data, which we really haven't done that in the past, and this is going to be very helpful for us to have that information so that we can address our English language population and also our, our general population. So just putting those basic infrastructures in place, I think is gonna give us a lot more information about where our students are at, and then how to address their needs and what interventions we might need to put in place. The other important piece here is working on constructing assessments for the project-based learning that is happening in our school. So there's a lot of that that takes place at OAS and working in collaboration with teachers, that is, as a, a goal. And assessing our content, learning how to implement the new English language standards. So with this increase of diversity in our population, I feel it's extremely important that along with that comes professional learning opportunities. So I'm looking forward, and I'm working on this now with Antioch, to develop some professional development at our site with our staff. So that would involve anything, anywhere from, you know, learning the new standards, how to, what are the strategies, different strategies to implement, lesson design, lesson execution, all of those things are important for us in, in, when we are, are teaching, they're, they're just best practices and they definitely will address how to work with our English learner population and be more effective. So those were three, well, some areas that I wanted to highlight for you. And I also wanted to say that it has been really a joy working with my community and getting to know them. And they are some of the most hardworking, dedicated people I know. And I appreciate their, their willingness to, to grow, to learn, and a big part of what we've been working on this year is building relationships and building trust and, and for me to be present and to be present with the community. So I'm, I'm open to any questions you might have, and thank you again for letting me come and, and share.
Thank you, Ms. Millian. Millian, board. Ms. Parker?
Quick question, just on the, on the data on the first page, you have a number for free and reduced lunch, and maybe this is a Ms. Chatey question, I'm not sure.
Yes.
A number for free and reduced lunch that's different from your socio-economically disadvantaged? And I tend to think of them in, in education world as being one and the same. And so I'm wondering what the marker difference is between socio-economically disadvantaged and free and reduced lunch?
And I'm not sure I can answer that specifically.
Is that an illuminate question, Ms. Chatey?
Well, it's probably a NutraKids question, but I would say that the difference would be that we have free and we have reduced.
Okay.
So I would have to look at the data that the socioeconomic disadvantage, where they pulled that data from.
Because I'd be curious, because our other schools, the other elementarys actually didn't report that out. And, and so it could be that it's a system-wide issue, and so I, I would be curious, because obviously that number is extremely important.
It is.
And then, you know, I really welcome you and congratulate you, and I think that everything that I'm hearing is just so great out of open alternative school. And in a way, it's funny, well, in two ways it's kind of funny, because the, the, in terms of the funding that's tied to this particular single plan, you know, it's such a small amount compared to a lot of our other schools. And you, you've jumped through every hoop and, and, you know, crossed your t's and dotted your i's, and I, and I think that that's great, the, despite the fact that it's a very small amount of money that's tied to it. Of course, you know, the, the big shocker here is in your pupil engagement number, your, your data there, and truancies and chronic absenteeism. And, you know, that is something that we just know is not good for students.
Right.
And so I appreciate that that's something that you're really focusing on this coming year. My only suggestion would be, and it's, you know, this is absolutely to the letter, exactly what you'd expect, just that this is open alternative school, and I would love in the future to see more of the alternative somehow.
Sure.
You know, to see that somehow the ways that alternative schools can sort of interface with the bureaucracy of a state education system and a district education system, I think that that can create a really nice tension and be an example for other schools. And so, but at the same time, I recognize that this is not where any funding for that would come from, so it's a little bit difficult.
And I agree with you, and I think after, my afterthought was, yes, I could have put all of these other pieces in there, restorative approaches, all of the other things that we are doing. And I appreciate that feedback, because that does need to be reflected.
Thank you.
Ms. Edelson?
Hi. Can you speak to how TK is coming in and also the transportation issues?
Yes, that, and I, I think I have addressed that with some board member, well, board members and also Dr. Cash, and I know Emilio, I've spoken with him. One of the challenges has been, because we are receiving children, it's been wonderful that we've been able to take in children, the TK's, also additional children from other, other attendance areas. But some of the challenge has been the busing, yes, getting kids, figuring out the routes, getting, getting kids to school on time. And having, and, and actually trying to streamline the busing and not have three buses coming at the same time, but how can we get them to go and pick up the children along the way and bring them to our, our school on time? So we have, we've had three different buses dropping off in the morning and three in the afternoon picking up. So that's, that's been a bit challenging. And I, and, and again, because all the children need to be at school at the same time. So if we're at the end of the route, we have kids coming late. And sometimes they're as late as 30 minutes, we've had that. And they still need to eat breakfast. So that's something that I have taken up with the Santa Barbara Transportation and had conversations and tried to work on that. And we've, we're getting better. We've, we have had, we're now have, we have one bus that's picking up in the afternoon, I believe, yes, one bus. So that's pretty wonderful. And that's been a bit challenging, because I want to be out there and get them and pick them up and bring them down. I've been teaching them how to do that, when you've got little ones, you know? So, and with the TK, that's been somewhat challenging, just because kids are at different, the families are, they have kids at different schools. Right.
About how many students are taking the bus transportation?
We have, I want to say 20, around 20, yes, 20 students. So there's some, there are some challenges. I want to also say though, working with the Santa Barbara School District, the, the Santa Barbara Transportation, they've been very, you know, I, I've just been really consistently working with them and talking with them and they're really trying to work on it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you explain to me the truancy rate and the chronic absenteeism of?
Yeah, well.
40% and 50%?
Okay.
I don't understand, I guess I don't understand what it is.
So last, last year, and I actually put a, a call into Chelsea, because I wanted to have a little more explanation with this, but didn't get it. My understanding of this is, we have some, we had some outliers, okay? You know, we're looking at a very small, real small school. And we had some, we had a couple students last year, and I don't even know if Mitch can speak to this, but that were not coming to school, chronic, you know, absent, absent, absent. And, and I would say overall, when, when you look at, we have these outliers, right? So when you look at the, the data, I, I think that is reflected in that, that, those numbers. And I was trying to get a little bit deeper understanding of that, other than, you know, I did look into, yes, we had some students that were, a few students, that we had some challenges were with in the, in the year passed. One of the things, I'm, I'm sorry, Ed, if I can't be very clear, but one of the things going forward that I am doing is I am meeting with parents, I am sending home letters and being proactive. And just being out in front of the school in the morning makes a big difference. I, I've had conversations with some parents that, you know, I want to encourage them to get to school on time and the importance of that. I've sent home information in our parent square to communicate with parents the importance, what the impact that has on our school, our funds, how, how critical it is. And that we want to, we want to bring our numbers up here, you know, we want to increase our attendance, increase, you know, we're at 91.9, we should be at 99%, okay? 99.9 or 100%. But, you know, these are, these are definitely areas of concern. And I am taking measures, you know, to, to be very deliberate about following up with parents and explaining to them that this is not okay and we need to be at school on time. So I think that's, that's a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Ms. Lamone?
I have a follow-up to it, just because, yeah, those numbers were a shocker and I was actually convinced that they were errors, because I hadn't seen those. But, you know, even thinking about the 20 students that are on a bus, 20 students won't equate to 40% or 50%. So that was last year, how is it going this year? I mean, it sounds like you're, you're proactive, but do you have any sense of, should, you know, are you, do you foresee that for 1415, we will see similar numbers, a decrease in numbers, significantly decrease?
And in the plan, you know, I was very, I was very moderate here, I said 10% decrease, but I would like to see.
In both areas?
Yes, I would like to see it much lower, yes. And I do, I am very hopeful. And I- And I think with conversations, being vigilant with parents about it, and I have a meeting scheduled for Thursday with a parent, that that, I hope, is going to make a difference. And, you know, I also want to make a point here that, and I do want to appreciate Mitch, who came in to OAS and served as the interim, and he did a fabulous job there. And I appreciate you doing what you did and offering that support. And I also want to say that, that there's a lot of work, a lot of things we're working on to correct some things that, as you can see, with attendance. And I think through my vigilance and making it very, being emphatic about that, I hope that that's going to make a difference. It's not going to be just kind of something that can happen.
Right. So it is your sense that it has already improved for 14, 15?
Yes, yes. And I think, and Elizabeth and I actually had a conversation about that.
Okay. And so then I have a question, and I think it's for Mitch, or I'm not sure who it's for, but how is a truancy rate and our chronic absenteeism rate calculated?
Chronic absenteeism is a student who's missed 10% of the school year.
So 50%, so I want to make sure I'm understanding, is 50% of the students have missed 10% or more?
Correct. 18 days.
18 days, okay. So 50% of the students have missed 18 days or more. And truancy rate is also by student?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. And it's important to stay out loud, in elementary schools, the absenteeism issue is, is really a, it's a family dynamics issue. And so Colleen is hitting it directly head-on by talking to parents and families about the importance of being in school. It's rarely a kid issue. It's, as opposed to what it could be in our secondary school.
Well, Dr. Cash, I'm glad you said that, because there's a lot of misunderstanding, like you just said, about, well, we just went on a vacation, you know, we just, we need to go do this, or we need to do that. And then there's no follow-up, there's no, there's no, and when I say it, that's not excuse absence. So, so yes, it's hitting it on, straight on and communicating and being clear. And I, the past information I did put out not too long ago, you know, one of the parents did say to me, wow, I didn't know that. So it's being transparent and clear, and we want kids to be in school and on time.
Absolutely. Well, we appreciate your efforts to improve that rate this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
And just following up on that, I can, I can see, there are so many reasons why a family may choose or may not be able to get a student either to school on time or regularly. But when it's that case where it's a parent choice, I think there can sometimes be the sense of the family as paramount and as the most important thing, and a lack of understanding of how hard it is on the student and on their social dynamic and their class dynamic, and not even to mention their learning, how hard it is on them. And I'm sure that that's something that you're hitting hard as well. And I hope that really does turn around this year and in the future years. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And I would just ask, if you look into those two numbers and find anything that you might think would be of interest to us, clarifying, because it does, looking at it, it's just, those are astounding numbers, so if in investigation...
I will share that.
That would be nice. And I just want to say that thank you to Mr. Hetjunk. Is he still here?
No.
Yeah. You know, the campus looks beautiful. So thanks to the bond money and thanks for the, you know, the campus is dramatically different today than it was a year ago. And I was out there one day during, I think, the Day of Caring, and I saw this stranger in hazmat outfit cleaning out storage rooms with rats running around, and the whole staff was there cleaning them out, getting rid of stuff that's been there for generations, I think. And so I applaud the work effort you put in and your staff put in to get it looking good and creating more space from areas that just weren't being used, but being, they were being used as storage of things, no longer valid. But you did a great job. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion? Oh, to, no, this comes back on the...
Could we put it on the consent agenda?
All right. I'm, I'm, I'll just say it now, because it's my first meeting, I'm more generous on things if we want to approve them without coming back on a conference agenda, or coming back on an action item, on things. We approved all the other single plans, and there wasn't a change to any of them when it came back on to the conference agenda or action agenda. So if anybody wants to make a motion to approve it, I entertain it, but I understand.
I would certainly be willing to make a motion to approve the single plan for open alternative school. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Thank you, Ms. Parker. All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You're down, I'm asleep. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Enjoy the next hour. I, too. Update on implementation progress of Munis Financial System.
Thank you very much, Mr. Heron. Our Fiscal Services Division, as Ms. Chite referenced in her budget presentation, has been miserly implementing a new financial software, and Mr. Tedeschi is here to let us know how it's going.
All right. President Heron, members of the board, Dr. Cash, I want to thank you for, first of all, not putting me right after the budget, because I think two finance discussions in a row might be a bit much. And also letting me come up here and talk about something that a lot of myself and staff have committed the last 18 months of our lives to. These things are complicated, and there's a lot that goes into it. And I think one thing that we have to remember is that we're running a business here, we're running a business of educating children, and there's a lot to this business. And as you have just seen the tip of it from, you know, some of the budget presentations, is there's a lot of complexities in school finance, in how we pay our employees, all the calendars and salary schedules, and, and how we pay vendors and how we develop our budget. All of that stuff has to go in and come out of this new system, from Tyler Technologies that's called Munis. And back in April of last year was when we committed to making the change to Munis. And the software was installed in June of last year. And from that point forward, we spent many hours of time meeting with consultants, setting up human resources, importing data, doing all of those things to get ready for our go-live date, which was July 1 of 2014. And there was a lot of blood, sweat, and tears shed to get that done. But since then, you know, these, all these modules, just so you know, go into this, we got payroll, human resources, position control, budgeting, purchasing, accounting, accounts payable, accounts receivable, fixed assets, inventory. All of these things are, had to be set up and put together in the system and gone live July 1. And one of the benefits, it's a web-based application. So one of the nice things about that is we don't have to go around to every computer in the district and install software. But there are other challenges with that as well, with different computers and different browsers and different versions of Java and things like that, that, so we've had our challenges with hardware. And ETS has been great helping us get over some of those and kind of get some of the stuff taken care of. We've put together some how-to documents on, for sites, the staff, for the staff here at the DO, as far as just how to log into the system. It's different than how we've been doing it in QSS and systems in the past. So we're trying to be proactive about putting together binders for all staff that are going to use the system, that will have how-to documents and simple steps on how to do the functions that they need to do. Because our goal, especially for the people out at the sites, is to make this as little of a problem, as, a smaller task as we can, without putting too many complexities in it. And we've got a lot of work to do to get there. But, you know, I have to commend a lot of the classified staff at the sites and here at the district office for working their tails off and really working and being patient to try to get, you know, things figured out and into this new system. These people have, have really worked hard. We produced our first payroll in Munis on July 31, and have produced five successful payrolls since, you know? And that in and of itself is huge. Now, there may not be 100% perfect payrolls, but our margin of error has been small, and we've been able to fix any problems that, that have come forward in payroll. And right now, we're working on our first 3% increase and potential retro as well in the new system. Every system does it differently, and with all the different job classes and thing, it's a, it's a challenge, but staff's up to it and they're working on it now. We've produced weekly vendor payment check runs, a big change in how we pay our vendors and how all the flow of paper is now. This system has a module called Tyler Content Manager, where instead of keeping boxes and boxes of paper invoices, what happens is things get scanned into the system. And so basically what you have, you have an invoice scanned in the system, you have receiving documents scanned in the system, you have PDFs of POs and checks. So when I look up a vendor and look for a particular invoice in the system from this one screen, I can get all of that. And I don't have to go disrupt one of the AP texts to start digging in files to find these things. And, and so all of this is in one place. Well, it sounds great when it works perfectly, and it has worked very well, the scanning, you know, the hardware and the software, we had some challenges there, but we've, again, we've worked through a lot of that. But, so when it all comes together, it's going to be real fantastic for our auditors, and everything's going to be in one place. So basically, we've paid our vendors and, you know, gotten things done in time, and let's see, we loaded and reconciled all of our last year ending balances and got them into this year, which was a big part in producing the budget. And producing our first budget in Munis was a challenge, but, you know, we spent a lot of hours making sure the software produced a data file that was compliant with the state software. And we got it to work, and once we got it in there, it was, it all kind of came together really quickly. And one of the big recent successes that, a milestone for us, was rolling out the employee self-service website. And I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to log in it. We, we put something out on eNews. So this is a site where employees can get all their pay information, copies of their paychecks, they can check their leave balances, and we'll be actually putting PDF copies of your W2s on there, and, which is great. Now it's online, available to all employees from any computer. So we're going to put some analytics on that to see how many people are actually doing that. Because a goal of ours coming up soon is to no longer print the 1,300 direct deposit statements that we print every month, because we want to send people an email saying, hey, you can check your direct deposit statement, log into ESS, and it's right there in a PDF form that you can print, save to your computer, whatever. So that's about 1,200 or 1,300 a month. And that's, over the course of a year, that's a whole lot of paper that we're going to try to not have to use anymore. So if any employees here, check it out. If you don't know how to log in, or you have any trouble checking in, you can call ETS, and Samantha will help you get logged in, or you can call me, I can always help you as well. So that, that was a big part, exciting. I think that just rolled out at the end of last month after that last payroll. So if you haven't seen it, please check it out. The things we have in process right now with Munis is we're building an interface with the ASOP subcalling system. So basically, we'll use that to generate pays for our substitute teachers. Because right now, subs carry around these purple and pink and yellow and green cards that they carry from site to site, and principals sign off whenever they complete a sub job. Well, we're hoping to get to that, so where all of that's done in ASOP, and then we're building an, an interface, ETS is helping us do that right now, to where all of that will just be brought in electronically. Principals will approve all their subs in the ASOP system, and when they've finally reconciled the month, it'll all come directly in to the payroll system where the subs, where our payroll division will check it and then pay those subs, instead of right now collecting a stack of subcards and manually keying them in. So that's a big efficiency that, and hopefully alleviate any errors that come up, and it'll save a lot of time and allow our payroll staff to really do a lot more checking and verifying and confirming. Because that's the goal. I'm trying to get them away from doing as much of the data entry that they're doing so they can really provide value to the payroll process, so we can really minimize the number of errors and challenges that we have. Also, that's, that ASOP system will be used to process leave requests for teachers. Teachers will request vacation days, or actually don't have vacation days, sick time, if they need sick time, it'll all come through that ASOP system, where the sub will be requested, the sick time will be recorded for the teacher, and it'll all automatically come into the Munis system. We're also working on automating the timesheet processing, where the, the school sites already enter time onto a spreadsheet. That spreadsheet then comes to the district office, where it's then printed and keyed in. So we're going to create this in a template to where the sites will still enter it on a spreadsheet, but we'll just import it right into the system to, a little more efficiency to allow that payroll staff to do a little more verification. Also, we're working on loading and verifying the W2 and 1099 accumulator information. Since we went live July 1, we've got half a year in one system and half a year in another system. And if you remember back when we went to QSS, I believe everybody got a minimum of two W2s, and some people probably got three or four, because I think then it was multiple districts and multiple systems. So, so we're hoping to get that all in one place, and the paychecks will all, hoping to get it into the December paycheck that'll show a true year-to-date figure, because right now, they just show from July on. We have staff now in ETS to help us develop custom reports as needed, for HR, for payroll, for budgeting, for Meg, any demands that she makes of us for data, hopefully we can turn that around and get it to her pretty quickly. So that's a, a new thing that we have available to us. And she's, she's only been here for maybe a month, and she's doing a fantastic job at being able to program these custom reports. And we're still working on training with various DO staff to try to really get them to, to understand the flow and the processes for the system. Coming soon, we've got personnel action forms and position action forms. If you're familiar with how the district handles those, now it's with a system we call STARS, which is completely independent of the payroll and HR system. So Munis has these, these workflow approvals of positions and people in positions, to where a site will enter it onto this form, it'll come to HR, HR will approve it or deny it. But if they approve it, it'll go in and actually update the employee's payroll record, which is a huge savings of time and efficiency, and should eliminate a number of errors and time it takes to process a lot of those things. Let's see, one of the things we're hoping to do for our principals is there is a feature through the employee self-service website where they'll be able to approve requisitions, purchasing requisitions from their phones or from their iPads, wherever they may be. Now, this is just a link to a real minimum set of data that they would see on this website. It doesn't go into the whole system to show any kind of sensitive tax information or anything like that. It takes them to a page that shows, here's the vendor, here's what's being requested, do you approve? So in a pinch, a principal could be anywhere and be able to approve a requisition, especially in an emergency situation. So in conclusion, you know, this implementation is ongoing, you know, we're not done, we're not going to be done for probably another year. You know, there's a lot of features and functionality that we still have yet to uncover. And like I said, it's been challenging with various bumps in the road, and, you know, the classified staff, there has been some pain and frustration, but, you know, they've really, really worked hard again on a new system. And, you know, the sites have been great, and we're still working with them. I feel like I owe them some more training and special attention to now get to the next level, as far as being, you know, higher-level users of the system. Another thing I'd like to do now that we're live is to go back and look at, evaluate some of the processes and how we do things, and can we improve efficiencies? Can we get better? Can we tighten things up a little bit? Can we do things with fewer steps? And all that is part of the ongoing evaluation and process improvement that we need to do in the business office in running our business of educating kids. That's something we should always be looking at. So with that, I hope, that didn't get into too much detail. I know it's not what everyone came here to listen to tonight, but I appreciate giving the time for me to discuss this, because it's between Lacy Preston, who's been my right-hand person and has been fantastic in helping with this implementation, and the managers and the staff. It's been a challenge, and it's been a big part of our lives for the last 18 months. So, thank you. So I'll, any questions anyone might have, I'd be happy to answer.
First question is, have any of you signed in?
Not yet, but now I'm excited.
Yeah, now we're excited.
Yeah.
Can we have a class?
Well, there was instructions that went out in eNews, and you need to know your employee ID, which is on your paycheck in the top-left corner, and your initial password is the last four digits of your social security number. Then it'll prompt you to change it, to set something permanent. But please, go in there, poke around, it's all, you know, read-only, and actually, some of it, we're giving employees the opportunity to change and verify their address. of it, we're giving employees the opportunity to change and verify their address information, their email address, and you know, that kind of contact information. And we're asking employees to do that, especially now as W2s are going out next month, we want to make sure that we have the right addresses on file for people. And in the future, people will be able to change their W4 information, actually update their direct deposit information and all that on that employee self-service. So even that's going to be evolving over time. But please, log in, check it out, let me know what you think.
Any questions? Comments? Thank you for the effort. It's, it's beyond our comprehension, but I'm sure glad you have it.
Trust me, it's, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
It's worth it.
Well, it's, I just want to say one thing, that it's really nice to have Conrad and his team in there doing this, because this system is way more complex than any system we've ever had. And I think that, and I, I think Conrad would agree, that we have, we have skimmed the surface. We've got this massive system underneath of us, and, and we're not using it to its full potential, but by any means, it's, it's an amazing system, and we're really eager, we'll probably be pretty fluent in it, I would say, in five years. We'll, we'll be so solid in it.
So we're in the, yeah, we're in this for the long haul. It's very, it's very complex, but it's flexible, and that's what makes it inherently complex, so.
Mr. Paz, Dr. Paz?
Just a quick question. So do you all anticipate having a lot more training that's going to come your way, that you're going to need from the staff perspective?
Yes, we've put in the budget lots of training, because we feel that that's the only way that we're going to get to the next step. And with Conrad and Lacy, they, they, they have been, there's a lot of training that has been going on with them, and they have really just gotten into this and gone off on their own. And there's all kinds of knowledge-based documents that all of our staff is using, including HR, and so it's, it's, there's a lot of stuff out there. And the customer service is amazing from Munis, very responsive. We have a lot of go-to meetings, we'll set up, Conrad will set up two computers, and he'll have somebody in Boston working on both of them, and he's working on his. I mean, so the, compared to the other systems we have had, it's, it's just unbelievable.
Okay, we will move to I-3, and just to alert, I will ask once again after I-3 to move I-6 as the next item after I-3. So Dr. Cash?
Yes, you have it, we're going to give you an update on our suspension data and our implementation of restorative approaches, and we have Mitch Trina, our Assistant Chief for Pupils Services.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, Mr. President, Board members. This is going to be a two-part story. The first part is mine, giving you some information on our trends and analysis of our suspension data, and then Mr. Harkey will come up, and he will actually give you some information in regards to our RA approaches, or sort of approaches, and how it's affecting that data. I'm sorry, Conrad, it's the suspension analysis.
Which, what do you mean?
There should be two.
Two what?
Two PowerPoints?
There's only one attached.
I have two that are, I have RA and RA.
There wasn't one, that's a suspension?
At 5:00 this evening, that was what I had. Let me look.
No. But suspensions is included in it, if there's a separate?
The suspension data is from all of our district-wide, and RA is only for schools that are implementing. There's one that's a suspension.
Why don't we go straight to the RA presentation, so we don't wait? Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
All right. Go. Mr. Harkey?
I'll have to put it up. Sorry for that little wrinkle. Thank you for your time this evening and your time with us, we feel that it's very important. And as Mitch stated, we're just doing a little update on how things are going, so we can go to the, thank you. A big thing that we are wrapping our heads around right now is that RA is not just about suspension, and it's not just about hard data. The studies and the research that I've done go to the fact that we can gauge effectiveness quantitatively as well as qualitatively, and right now, we're only really doing that quantitatively with suspension data. We can expand that to other data as well. So as you know, in 2012, 2013, we piloted SBJ. We expanded from SBJ to all of our junior highs and Santa Barbara High the following year. And this year, we've expanded that to Dos Pueblos, San Marcos, Washington, and Cleveland. Franklin was on the agenda for this year, but as of right now, that's going to be on hold until June. And we can go to the next slide. And I was speaking about this, Chelsea and I, and also thanks to Chelsea very much for working very hard on pulling this data. Looking at, trying to identify other indicators of success besides suspension. In our most recent contact with Denver, the overall consensus is to see a real change in a school. This takes about five to seven years of hard push and implementation. The overarching focus of RA is to improve our educational experience for all of our students, and also to reduce disproportionality in all areas. And we feel that RA is a critical piece in our drive towards realizing culturally proficient school district. We can move forward. So here are the numbers. We went back six years prior to implementation to get a baseline average on our suspensions. So our six-year average prior to implementation for suspensions for our Hispanic-Latino students was 510 suspensions a year total from the schools that are implementing now. As of the end of last year, the 2013-14 school year, that number was 301, and that represents a 41% decrease overall. The 81% and the 78% represent the proportion, or the proportion of suspensions overall. So that 510 suspensions for Hispanic and Latino students was 81% of total suspensions for the six-year average. Just to, because I can't even hardly look at this, it's, okay, moving on. So for our white students, total suspensions as a six-year average was 89. That's gone down to 66, which is a decrease of 26%, which brings us to this 39% average decrease in suspensions at our implementing schools as of the close of last school year. We can go to the next slide. So this is proportion of suspensions, RA, sorry, it's pre-RA versus RA implementation for Hispanic-Latino students. So, and this is enrollment, so pre-RA average enrollment for Hispanic-Latino students was 55% of our student body at those schools. Suspensions was 81%, which is a 26-point difference. RA implementation year, the Hispanic-Latino demographic was 56%, suspensions 78%. It's a 22-point difference, so we're down a four-point difference. And that is not a huge, or anywhere near what we would like, but it is a move towards the proportionality that we talk about. We can go, okay, thank you. Pre-RA, 37% of our demographic was for white students. That represented 14% of our suspensions. And in our RA implementation year, or sorry, and that's a 23-point difference between those two percentages. In our RA implementation year, pretty much the same demographic, 36% of our enrollment, 17% of our suspensions, it's a 19-point difference, so overall, that's a four-point increase in suspensions for white students. Now, this slide is just for Santa Barbara Junior High as our pilot school, and they've had full implementation for two years. So we have a five-year average for Santa Barbara High, not a six-year average, but our total suspensions for Hispanic and Latino students for our five-year average was 148 per year. First year of implementation, that was down to 60 suspensions. Last year, second year of implementation, that was down to 36 suspensions, for an overall difference of almost 76% decrease in suspensions for Hispanic and Latino students. For our white students, 16 suspensions was our five-year average. That went up to 22 suspensions in our first year, and then down to 12 suspensions last year, for an overall decrease of 26%. So for all suspensions at Santa Barbara Junior High, in the two years of implementation, compared to the five-year average, we see a 71.2% decrease in suspensions. I know that was fast, but I also know that everything goes over, so are there any questions?
Ms. Parker?
Yes, can I just ask the Santa Barbara Junior High demographics in terms of Latino and white students currently?
Oh, let me go back. Well, that's a very good question. Chelsea, did we pull that data?
And I put some notes.
At the bottom?
At the bottom. And then that's.
Oh, yeah, that's what we looked up today, sorry. Thank you.
You were prepared, Dr. Keanu.
So in 2013-14, Santa Barbara Junior High demographic is 59% Latino and 36% white, and the rest other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, Ms. Lemon?
Well, I'd just like to say that I appreciate that the trends are going in the right direction. Small gains are nonetheless a gain, so I appreciate the hard work. I know you yourself have been leading a lot of this effort as well, and so I just thank the district for the directions and look forward to seeing, you know, the numbers as they expand. And as you said, that's not the sole metric to measure success, but it is one of them.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I noticed that, you know, Santa Barbara Junior High the second year was a dramatic difference. And so I hope we can look forward to that same type of results at the other schools as they come online and get prepared and understand the system better. That section is fantastic. Do you have another section, Mr. Mitch?
Yes, well, we'll go through our trends right now. This is a very short slideshow, please.
Thank you, Mr. Harkey.
Thank you.
Before Mr. Trina starts, I want to acknowledge Aaron Harkey's work in this area, it's just been outstanding. We knew he was a great teacher in the classroom. It's different when you teach kids versus working with adults. Adult learning is different than child learning, and he's done a tremendous job in that transition and really is a shining star in our district, and I want to acknowledge him publicly for his hard work, not just in RA, but in NABIT as well. So, it means a lot. I think RA is a game changer for us. So, thank you, Mr. Harkey. Thank you, Mr. Trina.
Very welcome. So what you'll see is, this is a secondary referral, so this is our secondary schools, and we're talking about referrals out of class, not out of school. So these are, students are being referred to a counselor or to an admin, or just out of the class because of, hopefully, an intervention outside the class, but we'll be keeping them in school overall. Please. So I did this by junior high and high schools, we broke it out. As you know, the junior highs were implementing first prior to the high schools. In 1213, it was all the junior highs plus Santa Barbara Junior, Santa Barbara High School. I'm sorry, it was junior highs, Santa Barbara Junior High, and then in 2013-14, it was all of our junior highs plus Santa Barbara High. So if you notice, the trend for out-of-class referrals, the slope for the high schools was much steeper in that year of transition for our RA, and the one for the junior highs was less steep. So here we have the same information broken out into our racial groups. I don't think there's much surprising here in regards to the number and which specific racial groups are being seen as higher, but I think when we look at the out-of-class rate from the 1213, 1314 year, what we're noticing is that our Spanish students are actually getting referred out of class, but not necessarily being suspended, which our next slide will show. So here's our actually suspensions, those students who are being kicked out of school or suspended from school due to some type of violation of ed code. And if you look at our stats versus the socioeconomic status, the trend is for our SEDs to be trending low, and there's a slight uptick from the last year to, from 1213 to 1314. And then this data, I think, is very indicative of what we're hoping to see more of, the very drastic slope from 1011 to 1314 in reduction of suspensions for our Hispanic-Latino population and reduction of suspensions overall. Any questions?
Just, can this data eventually be put on the agenda as an attachment?
We will make sure and send it to you.
Thank you. Ms. Edelson?
I just am wondering, have reasons for suspensions changed since RA has come into play?
No.
Okay, so basically, that criteria for when a student would be suspended or not be suspended is status quo?
Correct.
Right. And then the in-school suspensions, has that changed? Or did that not exist prior to RA?
It existed. It's hard to track that, because if you get a referral for out-of-class, there is no referral that says that they went to a counselor, or they went to an in-house suspension, or they went to the administrator for a conversation. So there's, I don't know if we're going to be able to pull that type of data out. Dr. Yermauán, I don't know if there's an indicator in our database right now to illuminate to say, what's the intervention if it's a referral? I know that we're trying to implement some of those things in regards to if the RA intervention happened, I know that we'll be able to be documented and tracked.
Okay.
Dr. Paz?
So what we... Turned off my own mic. So when we look at those numbers, it's great, I love the trend down, and, you know, hopefully that will continue even as we implement across different schools. But you know, we still have that number at the end, which is still, I'd love to see it zero. Whether that happens or not, that's a different question. But part of my question is to look at that last number and that group of students, right? That, that represent that 466, or the 120, or whatever is the bottom number there. And think about it in terms of, when we as a board look at students who are getting, have an expulsion, many of them have had a number of suspensions before they even get to the point in time of expulsion happening. So my question is really to look at, you know, I think restorative approaches is one tool in the toolbox, so to speak, but we have to kind of look at, what are we doing? And in many ways, restorative approaches is somewhat prevention and somewhat addressing an issue at the time. But I kind of want to look at it in a step further in terms of more of the prevention side, and looking at students, there's a pattern. If you were to look at all those 466 students, disaggregate all the data they possibly bring with them, there would be some levels of, or indicators that are going to pop up. A lot of it has to do with attendance at school, but some of it has to do with engagement, some of it has to do with other issues. And I wonder how much work we're doing in that end of the work that we're seeing here of looking at, you know, there are all kinds of things that are called early warning systems that give an indication of a student kind of starting to look a little not the way they're supposed to. So I wonder if we're talking about that now, we're looking at that in the future, is it something that we want to kind of start looking at a little more in-depth as we move forward?
Yes, to all those questions.
Ms. Lemon?
So this is more an observation, you know, I hadn't actually seen the SED, the socioeconomic disadvantage data presented in relation to suspensions and expulsions in this way before. So I appreciate seeing that. I mean, I think it says messages, it's not just Latino and African-Americans, it's poor students who are also being suspended and expelled at disproportionate rates to their colleagues. But how do we think about that? I mean, because that just, I think of all the work that we've done in restorative justice, and so I'm trying to think, how do we think about that? That's, that's hard to think about, and to think about how we address it, and what kind of work we do, not just with the students, but with the adults too, and kind of the underlying reasons why poor students are also, yeah.
I was present at a provider summit earlier this afternoon or this morning, and one of the keynote speakers would talk directly about that, is a poor student who comes to school and is hungry, and maybe didn't get sleep because the home is crowded, and didn't have a quiet place to study for their homework. They're going to come to school with a little angst, and they're going to come to school probably not prepared. And so that first period class that they go into, or sometime at the day, they may not know how to handle that anxiety and that pressure of what it takes to exist in Santa Barbara as an impoverished student. And so a behavior might come up... And so a behavior might come up where it's, it's not something acceptable in the class. And I think you're right, how do we approach that student differently than some student who comes better prepared? And/or how do we help our teachers understand that it really isn't about an intentional behavior from the student, but that it's environmental factors that we should be looking at in addition to? And part of our job, I think, for the Discipline and Guidance Committee this year is to take those things into consideration. And what normally would be a suspension, like Ms. Edelson was talking about, the suspensions may change because we might have requiring an intervention with a restorative approaches initially before suspension would occur at all.
Great. Well, I appreciate seeing that information, and actually I would encourage us to keep looking at that information and not just looking at the ethnic identification, but also the SED. I know that we are starting to pull that also in other areas that are far beyond discipline, and I think that that's a good thing.
It's in the LCAP. We will.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. With board's permission, I would like to go to I six, First Reading and Discussion on Board Policy, 5117, Inter-District Attendance. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I don't have any speaker slips, so, oh, we have one? Okay. So if you are going to speak.
Here they come.
Well, we have more, sorry.
Okay, Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This item is before you for, as a conference item. There are some suggested changes that were entered by staff and some, and we're here to listen. The most significant changes really have to do with the following items. And if you could put this on, that would be great, Mr. Tedeschi. Children of full-time Santa Barbara City College employees would be an exception to the inter-district transfer. The elimination of students wishing to attend the Harding University Partnership in the seven years in which we've had that partnership, I've been told zero UCSB staff have taken advantage of that. And then the idea that we would open our school up to inter-district transfers on a space-available basis of up to 100 students, and that would be in our secondary schools. Then because the language was limited to one year, item four, all of the language around open alternative schools, one-year exempt, exception to the inter-district transfer denial was removed. So you have, board members received a suggested change from the OAS community that would put back in the fourth one and have them have the opportunity to enroll as many as 25 students for the, for an indefinite period of time. So we're here, Mr. Trina's here, I'm here. We can hopefully answer as many questions as you may have and take guidance and bring this back for action at our next meeting.
Dr. Paz?
So we have four speakers, and you may come up. The first speaker is Colleen Millian, and you have three minutes. You're actually first.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm Mark Chitillo. And I'm with the OAS community, and Principal Millian and I had arranged to do a tag team. So if it would be all right with you, if I could start things off, that would be our request.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, I'm Mark Chitillo. I was the former chair of the, president of the Open Alternative Education Foundation, and we much appreciate your convening this item. Obviously, as you all recall from earlier this year, OAS is a special school, school of choice, not located within the district's boundaries, and has historically relied on inter-district transfers in order to bring the highly motivated families that really want to participate in the progressive education that is the specialty of this school. With your action this January, we were able to increase our population of students this year from 136 to 169, from five to seven schools. Part of that, however, was both the expansion of our programs by the addition of a TK program as well as accepting a considerable number of displaced students that at the beginning of the school year didn't have their home school, their neighborhood school available to them. So we are on the path. We've worked very hard, and we're so pleased to have Colleen Millian on our, on our staff, and, and we feel like we are on the right path. We ask that you consider continuing the special treatment for OAS, the exception that we had drafted and submitted, which provides that we would be able to recruit up to 25 students from outside of the district in order to continue, on a space-available basis, in order to be able to continue the, the expansion of our programs and the recruitment of highly motivated families and continue to expand our diversity and provide the, the important niche that we think OAS fills within the district's overall community. It's, I, it's interesting every time I come and appear before you to talk about OAS. Last time, you were hearing about Common Core, and we were able to stand up and say, well, OAS has been working on the Common Core model for, for many years. That's really part of what we were structured to, to do. And today, restorative justice is on your agenda, and lo and behold, OAS has been practicing restorative justice as part of its core curriculum and its core values for many decades. And so we really appreciate our role in the district. And we would hope that your board could see through to approving the language for the 25 additional transfers that we requested. And I'd also ask that you try and, if you could give us direction tonight, because recruitment for the next school year is going to be happening soon, and so the, the more clear direction we have, the better. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Colleen Millian?
I'd like to add on to what Mark has stated, that in my, what, we're at 67, 60-plus days in school, what is very apparent to me is those families that are there, that are out of district, that are very committed to our school. They are very, they're very involved. They're there because they choose to be there, and they, we see our school as a school of, it is a school of choice, but it's a school where we all work together. And it's very focused on the community involvement, parents, teachers, children, our, our staff, our office staff. We're, we're all there working together. And I feel that my, my, my big goal is to grow the school and to move forward in that direction. And so hearing the, sitting in at conferences, listening to parents talk about how much they value the school and the chance that they get to be there, and these are some of our, our inter-district transfers. And, you know, I, I want to make sure that they can stay there, that their children, I see the benefits that the children are making and how we're supporting them. And I know you had the opportunity to hear, get some letters, I think, from a few parents. So again, I see the, that there can be a balance where we can bring in inter-district transfers who choose to come there and also make sure that our, we're also meeting the needs of our in-district families also. So I hope that you will consider the language that has been presented to you. In talking with Mark and our, our staff, we feel that that would very much support our movement forward. And I'm excited about that possibility. And hopefully, again, making sure that the families that have come to our school and that are vested can stay. And while I understand there are things that occur regarding funding and all of those big ideas that have an impact.
Thirty seconds.
I'd like you, please, to, at this point in time, to consider these, this request. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lanny Ebenstein.
Members of the board, Dr. Cash, I'm, I'm here to speak in favor of the proposal. And my, my thoughts are sort of both philosophical and, and practical. Philosophically, I think transfers are a good thing in terms of, I think that as much as possible, if we can give families the opportunities to attend the schools they'd like, I, I think that's positive. I think it's good for the public schools. I think that if there's choice within the public schools, that's, that's something that's good for our community. And if, if people are at the schools they like, I think they're going to be happier. They're going to be happier at those schools. If they're not at the schools they like, they're not going to be as happy. So I think that's a strong argument as to why in general, freer and open transfer policies are positive things. Secondly, from a more practical perspective, the dollars that inter-district transfers generate are significant in terms of 100 students at, I guess approximately $8,000 a year. That's $800,000. That's a lot of money. And that's something that I think is, is advantageous to the district. I was recently going through some old correspondence of mine, and I noted a letter that I wrote to the Board of Education in 1980 on inter-district and inter-district transfers. And I would guess that this policy has come back to the board probably about every other year since that time in terms of there's always one reason or another why these, these policies come back to the district. And as a, as a general rule, again, there, there are many reasons why the policies have been tightened at times over the years. There's many reasons why the policies have been, been made looser over the years. But it's something that is, as a general principle, I think that it's better to allow transfers when you're able to, and it seems that that's the situation that the district is in at this time. And the approach of a somewhat, of a graduated program, I, I think is a good way to go. I think the proposal to include Santa Barbara City College employees is a very good one, and it's something that builds the relationship between the Santa Barbara Unified School District and Santa Barbara City College. I think that's very positive. And I would note too, that I, though I hadn't come tonight to speak specifically with respect to the OAS issue, I, I think that for schools that are located outside of the boundaries of the old Santa Barbara Elementary School District, that, that there, there are grounds to say that they should be able to have inter-district transfers. So those are some thoughts on transfers, and thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Margaret Protell?
Good evening, Dr. Cash, President, Vice President, Board Members, fellow citizens, Administration. My name's Margaret Prothero. I'm a professor at Santa Barbara City College. I'm here to represent Santa Barbara City College, where I've been a full-time professor in the Department of English Skills for 18 years, and God willing, another 18. I came not prepared to speak this evening, but to answer any questions that came up, but primarily I came to say thank you. Thank you very much for including Santa Barbara City College employees in this board policy and that we are very much in favor of this and are very grateful that you're including us. We consider our work at Santa Barbara City College also an extension of everything through K through 14 here in Santa Barbara and that we serve the Santa Barbara students and our community. And this would make a very significant impact in the lives of many faculty who cannot afford to live in Santa Barbara and commute from Bulton, San Inez, Ojai, Ventura, and so on, and we do not have our children with us and have many issues regarding that. So this would make a very, very big difference in many lives, and thank you again for including us in this. If there are any questions, I'm here to answer that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No more speakers?
Board, Ms. Parker?
I think it's important, as we look at this policy, to always remember why it is the way it is and how devastating it was when we suddenly went into basic aid with essentially virtually no warning, because, you know, 10 years ago, this district was never, ever going to be basic aid. And we had 600 students that were inter-district transfers, 300 in elementary and 300 in secondary. And when, for financial reasons, we essentially kicked out six, almost 600 students, it, it obviously had a huge effect on OAS. It was devastating, but it was devastating across all of our schools. And every time this comes up, I'm so cautious because I, there is no like, whoa, guess what, three years from now, there's going to be a recession, you're going to be deflated, we might be basic aid. And, you know, then our primary responsibility is to our in-district students. And I just, I don't ever want us to be in a position where we are hurting so many families again. And so I see this as, you know, just putting a toe in and testing it out. I, I think 100 is something where maybe if things changed in the next two or three years, if the fiscal situation deteriorated, that we would be able to hold on to those kids even at the expense of the district. So that's what I'm thinking about when I'm thinking about the number of students coming in. I do have some suggested wording changes because I, I don't know that OAS needs exceptionalism at this point, because I almost see that as a limiting factor that you don't need to be limited to. And so I think that the policy needs to be up on the screen. And my suggested wording would actually, I'm going to go backwards and start at the very last page where we talk about the term of the transfer. And one of the issues was, you know, this idea of having to reapply every year. And my suggestion would be that instead we say, under the term of the transfer, which is a little bit higher than that, Mr. Tedeschi? There it is. That we say, "All inter-district transfer requests shall be approved only for one year," semicolon, "however, students need not reapply for readmission to the district prior to each school year. That transfers will only be revoked due to violation of the transfer agreement, excess in district enrollment, or negative financial impacts." Because I don't like the idea, and I'm sure parents would be horrified at the idea of your student is in, but then you have to run through a lottery every year. I, I don't think that that's in the best interest of students or, or any of the schools. And so as long as there's the understanding that the, that there may be things that change, and, and not for OAS in terms of boundaried students, but for our other schools, you know, it could be, it's the same that happens now with in-district transfers, that you might have to send a student back to their home school just because of people moving into the neighborhood. So that would be my suggestion for there. And then up to the first page, the two things that we talked about in, in the first bullet where it talks about children of district employees and children of full-time Santa Barbara City College employees, and I really appreciate our speaker on that, this was a suggestion that came out of Santa Barbara City College faculty originally with the idea that they teach so many of our secondary students in particular. But I'm also thinking of it in terms of the, what Dr. Ebenstein was talking about, the promoting the relationship and making the understanding that this is K-14. I'm even thinking of it in terms of effects on our policy, in terms of who can come present as college speakers and how many times they can come to our schools. And why is City College different? And I think that this adds to that whole piece of we do have a set, special relationship with Santa Barbara City College. My question really was on number two, and maybe other colleagues have some suggestions here, where it says, well, one thing on number one, I would also say that, I know that 5111.12 makes it clear that it's on a space-available basis, but I think that here, under, after the end of Santa Barbara City College employees, it needs to say, "on a space-available basis." These are not students that automatically get inter-district transfers in, and there has to be space. And frankly, if this were this year and for the foreseeable future, the only school that has space is OAS. And so I look at this and go, you know, do you need to limit yourself to 25 students? Because it could be that we have 50 students that want to come in, that are interested in alternative education, and there's no reason why, if there's space available at OAS, that's not the school that they go to. And so my question becomes that, number two. The district will accept up to 100 students wishing to attend one of the district schools on a space-available basis. So that makes it broad, that's K or even TK through 12. But then it narrows it down to, if more than 100 students wish to attend one of the district's secondary schools, all of those who have completed the inter-district transfer application will be placed in a random unbiased lottery, the first 100 students being allowed to attend a secondary school. And I'm not sure And I'm not sure what the thinking was behind that. If this is, if the intention is really, I mean, I don't think it should only be secondary students that are allowed to come in. I think it should be, you know, TK 12, if they want to try to transfer in. And I don't know if we want to say 50 for the elementary schools and 50 for secondary, or if we just want to get rid of the secondary. So if more than 100 students wish to attend, then, and there's not space available, then we do the lottery. So I guess that's a question that I'll leave open to other Board Members to talk about. If we just want to get rid of that secondary piece, and say, if more than 100 students wish to attend one of the district schools, then they will placed in a random unbiased lottery. So that's a question. Or if we want to do 50/50, which is what I would lean towards, saying 50 elementary, 50 secondary?
Ms. Edelson?
Well, it's interesting also, because OAS goes to eighth. So, from what I understand, includes seventh and eighth. So in a way, you sort of have an overlap there that I think we should talk about also. And I'm wondering, by including the elementary, are we assuming that no other elementary school besides OAS has room? Because what will happen is there'll be applications for other specific elementary schools. And then I just want to understand, are we sure about basic aid not being on the table? Or now that we're in the funding model, we are? I mean, how assured are you of that? That we're ADA for?
I am pretty darn sure that we will be in LCFF for a while unless something catastrophic happens, like, the only reason we went basic aid is the deficit spending, and we have to remember that, and a flat attendance, but mostly because we were deficit spending, I'm sorry, deficit revenue, sorry, it's getting me, by 22%. That's a lot.
Dr. Paz?
So am I reading this correct? And maybe it's just a clarification point. The district will accept up to 100 students wishing to attend one of the, one of the district schools on a space-available. So is that the total we're looking at? 100 students across this entire district? Or is it one particular school?
100, 100 total across the district was the meaning.
I think that might need a little more clarification. At least how I read it the first time, I was like, okay, one of the school, okay.
Ms. Limone?
All right. So a few things. I would actually not like to see Santa Barbara City College in the first. And I think that the second includes it, and it opens it up. And I think that while Santa Barbara City College is special, it's so special that my husband works there, I also think that the truth is, is we have MOUs, we have relationships with UCSB, with Antioch, and other schools. And so I think we, you know, to, I think it's better to not give one of those institutions of higher ed priority, and I actually think that the second one opens it up. I mean, I also feel like, thinking of examples of petitions that have come forward, there have been county employees who, I think, serve this community big and well, and live in Ventura, and have true hardships, to try to get their students here. And so I would rather see us not limit the preference to one particular institution, although very special, but make sure that that second bullet point does consider all others. There's City of Santa Barbara employees, there's county employees, there's, of course, other institutions of higher learning. I think we have public safety, actually, that lives in Ventura. And so to me, it's really hard to just think of one, when I think we have relationships with all these other entities. So I think in the lottery, if there was a lottery process for the 100, I think that would be a great place to put preference. But to give preference at the level of our district employees, I'm not sure sits well, knowing and thinking of the petitions that have come forward of other entities in our community that I think are equally deserving of an exception. So that would be my suggestion, that to remove the Santa Barbara City College from number one, and talk about a lottery, and give preference to some of these entities in number two.
Can I just ask a point of clarification? So you'd say, you'd start a tiered system in number two that says, first priority, children of Santa Barbara City College employees; second priority, children of employees or, or, or public agency employees, that kind of thing?
Yes, that would be my suggestion, that start a tiered for, yeah, for the 100. I don't actually, truthfully, think, maybe I'm wrong, but we're even going to hit this problem in the first year. I think that it could potentially be a problem after a little while. And I think, you know, deleting the Harding School piece, you know, I don't think it hurt to be there. I understand why it was there, but, so either way, like deleting it or keeping it didn't have a big impact or effect on me. I also think that I would like to see how, you know, it's almost like, because this does come to us, I would almost say, probably like every year, to be honest with you. I don't even know if every other year. I feel like I've visited four years, in the four years I've been here. To implement slowly, and try number one, and see what happens, and see what true impacts it has before moving on. I know that with OAS, I was of the mind that the, you know, eight students coming in would be able to stay there for the time being. I think it's eight students, it's not near the 100. But I'm also very mindful of, again, the complicated situations that come up when we have students who move into, I don't know, one particular school neighborhood, and it's a school that maybe had two spots open, but they're never going to have the chance because of this particular situation that we have, where we have other folks who want to go there. So I just, I would rather see us go slow. Truthfully, we're revising it anyway, every year. See what happens after you implement two, and then really think about, well, what did it do to all of our schools, including OAS and/or other schools? And if at that time, we need to modify or amend, I think that that's just part of our policy process. So those are my thoughts on that.
Ms. Edelson?
One follow-up. Eight years ago, when you said, Ms. Parker, that it was 600 students, was that a cap? Three, or that just happened to be how many students?
That's how many students, and I guess had, there was no cap. It was just how much space was available. And I don't know, maybe Mr. Treniak could answer, how many interdistrict transfer requests are you getting that we are essentially turning down right now?
As far as we're turning down, I'd say probably on the average, between 12 to 15. And a lot of them come, excuse me, come from students who lived here and had to move out. So, and I think the Board has seen a couple of those that they appealed, where they're looking to get back into the school that they were last year, but they moved out, so they're no longer, by policy, allowed to come in.
A couple of clarifications on this. By putting Santa Barbara City College in that first paragraph, is that outside the 100 that comes later? I mean, they're automatic? They get, along with district employees, and, you know, district employees have a pecking order in our system. So would the children of full-time Santa Barbara City College employees get that same pecking order in a lottery? You know, right now, the district employees in a lottery have second or third choice, or in a lottery. They're high up. Is the intent that the City College employees would be in the lottery at that same level?
Yes.
Yeah. And so that would mean that maybe a district employee wouldn't get elected, wouldn't get selected. If there's one spot, and we had one district employee and one City College employee, and the lottery luck was that City College got it, it'd be a disservice to our district employee. 5111-12 is strictly, I mean, loaded with the term "district employee." So it would have to be changed totally if we made this change. And so I would be, along with Ms. Limone, I wouldn't want to, I mean, I love City College. I wouldn't want to give them an advantage over our own employees. So somehow it'd have to be parceled out differently possibly, but not as, not in competition with district employees. And then a second clarification, I guess I just don't understand number two. Because one way I read it, what I heard, is there'll be 100 students wishing to attend one of the district schools on a space-available basis. What if there were 100 elementary students and 100 secondary students? Would the 100 elementary be allowed to attend? Or would they then be put in the lottery with the secondary schools, which that doesn't say?
You tell us.
I don't, I want, who wrote this? I want to know what the intent was.
I wrote it.
Yeah. And so was the intent that if there are 200 students, 100 of each, that then there would be a lottery of all 200?
The intent was it was limited to secondary schools.
Even in that first sentence?
Yes.
Because that, see, that doesn't say, it would have to say secondary schools, if that's the idea.
I hear that.
Yeah. And, and even if it, well, okay. And so then we're talking, I don't know how many students we're talking about, but to me, it would, the numbers would, like, I think like Ms. Parker said, the numbers would have to be changed. All of that works to the disadvantage of OAS, who is one of the reasons I'm interested in this topic, is because I, what I feel, I'm trying to build that school. And to put them in a lottery with secondary schools or even other elementary schools might work to the disservice of that philosophy of trying to help OAS. So I think that second paragraph needs a lot of work, as to what the real intent is. And again, we don't have room for secondary, for elementary schools, so that's not really a big issue.
That's why it was written for secondary.
Except for OAS.
Except for OAS. And that's why I think, and I'd like to read into the record, OAS's suggestion, just so it's in the record. We have copies of it, but it will come out, but the public doesn't know what their suggestion is, and they don't have access to it. So I will read it, and this would be the replacement for item number four currently. In addition to the above, meaning one, two, and three at the, the way this was written, students not living within the district's elementary boundaries may apply to enroll at the OAS on a space-available basis. Up to 25 such new students may be added in each academic year. If more than 25 students so apply, a random unbiased lottery shall determine which students are accepted. Except that siblings of students then enrolled at OAS shall receive enrollment preference in advance of a lottery. Once an interdistrict transfer to OAS is approved, that student may continue to attend OAS to the completion of their primary school education, subject to other district policies applicable to all students. And that last sentence might not be necessary if we follow Ms. Parker's recommendation. But having said all that, I think I prefer to see item four changed to the OAS wording. Ms. Parker?
On the secondary piece, or, sorry, on item number two, this is my suggested language. And that is, it says that on a space-available basis, the district will accept up to 100 interdistrict transfer students with 50 for elementary and 50 for secondary. Just as Ms. Limone said, we're testing this out, we're opening a little window in here for the secondary and a little bit more for elementary. If more than 100 students wish to attend the district schools, a district school, all of those who have completed the interdistrict transfer will be placed in an unbiased lottery, with the first students drawn being allowed to attend based on the following priority order. And I think we would need to work on that. But the following priority order for me, actually, given what OAS was saying, would be siblings of existing transfer students. Then it would be Santa Barbara City College employees. Then it would be other public agency employees. And then it would be children of employees within our district boundaries, just a different, you know, whatever, wherever they worked, as long as they worked somewhere within the unified boundary. And then all other students. And that would be my suggested priority order. I think if you put it so that there's 50 in elementary, that OAS could probably actually expand beyond 25 students, given the current state. So I, especially if you're giving first priority to siblings of existing students, certainly OAS, because they have existing transfer students, their families would be first on the list, really, to get in to any space at OAS. So again, I don't know that we need exceptionalism there, and it may end up limiting them. But, you know, I'm certainly open to it if there's some way of wording it that doesn't, you know, when, I think that it's just going to end up being a space-available basis, that people that want to get into Monroe, or that want to get into Franklin's, it's just not going to be possible. And, you know, that's certainly what I see for the coming year at least. But I also hate to have them treated that differently than one of our alternative schools.
Ms. Limone?
I just have a clarifying question for Ms. Parker. So I heard you say, you know, you ranked the priorities, and then you said district employees, but the policy, we wouldn't change number one, right?
No, no, I didn't. I meant employees of other public agencies, other public agencies, yeah.
I would be willing to kind of take recommendations. I mean, in the sense of, like, I, I also want to help OAS. So if having language in number four helps OAS, then I'm okay with that. But I also think there's potential for number two revised to help OAS as well, beyond the whatever number of students. But I have a question for Mr. Treniak. So, I mean, does it stand that if someone comes, I mean, because they're going to be coming to you this month, right? In the coming, well, in January? They'll be coming to you in January. If they come to you in January, and they say, "I want to be one of those 50 people for elementary," I'm probably not as worried about secondary, just because secondary kind of plays itself out naturally in a different way. What do you tell them? Say, "Well, that's great, but there's only room at this particular school?" Or in January, do you say, "Well, we have three schools who," I mean, do you know right now with certainty that there is only room at one school?
No, I do not. For next year, I do not. I can tell you now that K, three, and five are high-impact grades.
K, three and five? At all schools?
At all schools.
Including OAS?
Including OAS, I believe.
K, three and five?
I think it's fair to say, though, even if a space opens up at one of our schools, there's enough people in line to take it, that there's a lottery and somebody gets it. Have we ever had a situation where we have a room, but no lottery?
I'm sorry.
Do we have schools, in my experience, a school might have a fourth grade opening, or a sixth grade opening, or a third grade opening, but we have a lottery for that position in most cases?
We'd have a waiting list. If it's already open, we fill it with, obviously, resident students first.
Right.
But if, at some point, somebody wanted a school, and there was no opening, then they would either be put on a waiting list through a lottery, and then they would wait until an opening came up in that school.
Well, I guess my point is, there's enough intra-district students who want to change that if a space opens up, there's probably an intra-district student who will take it.
That's correct.
Yeah. So the chance of an intra-district student getting into those lotteries is probably minimum.
Correct. Or they'd be way down on that list.
Way on the, way down on the list. So most of our lotteries are filled by intra-districts, so that does take it down to very few choices.
How does, I mean, what kind of, you know, you have all the applications and the questions and the calls. So what kind of realistic or unrealistic expectation is this for you, as you're listening to us kind of talk this out loud?
It would be hard to predict, again. We didn't think that third grade would be a glut. We actually thought K would be, which it ended up being, but it wasn't initially. So the influx of students at certain grade levels is something that's not predictable. We do know that certain schools will open up. McKinley will have more numbers because of funding that's going away to keep their class size down. So McKinley may have more openings, especially in four, five, and six. As far as looking at the number of transfer applications that we get, we usually look at those in March with the principals, and they try to look at their numbers, the expected numbers for their K, and especially if they're looking for transfers in K through three, which are impacted. I think that when we look at elementary, 50 kids would be not doable.
What, knowing that there is an interest from, I think, from the Board to explore this, what is a number that would be, I know nothing's going to be easy. this, what is a number that would be, I know nothing's going to be easy for elementary, but what is a number that would be more doable than 50?
I think it also depends on our grade level, uh, and, um, you know, if it's four, five, six, I, I think there's much more room. Like, 25 would be reasonable. I, I just, it's hard to predict in K three, because we have so many students who do come K three, but for some reason, because there's, uh, higher class size in four, six, it's, it's easier to place them there.
We're, we're really impacted, K, TK six. That, that's why this was limited to secondary.
Except at OAS. I mean, we're not impacted there, except.
No, correct. That is correct.
But this as written doesn't, doesn't help OAS at all?
No, does not.
Ms. Parker?
I think then, when we're talking about 50 and 50, that maybe the language instead should be up to 50 in elementary and up to 50 in secondary for a total of 100, because it could be that there may be only space, for example, at OAS, for 30 students to come in. And then you, you don't want to say that you're not going to take 70. You may, you could bump that to 50, depending the way, or, yeah, up to 70, just so that your total equals 100 to start for this, um, 15, 16 school year. That would be my suggestion.
So you mean to have it flexed, where?
Right.
Only 30 elementary could come in, then we could add 20 to the secondary?
Yeah, that, that seems like that would make some sense to me, because there's going to be more space at secondary, there just is.
It's always on space availability, anyway.
Everything's on space availability, yeah.
So, you know, the, and you, you may have, you know, 50 elementary who want to try to get in, but they, they would be very, uh, they would want a specific school, or a couple.
And I think that the reality is, the way that we have seen that play out, is that the schools that will be requested, there will be no space at.
Correct.
So I'm wondering, do we really need this first time around, um, any kind of, um, levels? And if we just have 50 spaces and everybody can apply for them, and there's a lottery, the people who win the lottery, you know, get in. Trying to determine who's got better priority than others, you know, the firefighter coming from Ventura, policeman coming from Ventura, um, I don't know, those are pretty high priorities, maybe. But maybe not, not worry about a priority this first time, see what happens, and just accept up to, up to 50 secondary and up to 50 elementary. Um, and, and if they get more than 50, then there's a lottery. Ms. Parker?
I do still see that, and want to promote these, the unique relationship with Santa Barbara City College across multiple levels. Um, and, um, and so I'd still like to see that as a lottery priority, um, after district employees, something that goes into number two. But first, I would also really want to put siblings in. Um, so, uh, to me, I, I do think you need some sort of lottery priority order.
Dr. Cash of the, of the opinion that siblings are included already. I think, I mean, that's what, I think you told me, and, uh...
Well, in the, in the language that we had before, yes.
Mm-hmm.
In? In what language?
What language?
In the, I, I, if I was, I was responding to your question in relationship to the existing thing, that we would have no problem letting siblings go to OAS because we have room.
Yeah, but it's not in any policy that, if there were a lottery, that they would have priority.
There's no guarantee.
There is no guarantee.
No guarantee. There's no guarantee for anyone.
No.
Because it's space available.
Right. But I, I do think siblings should have some.
Absolutely.
So I think it sounds like we are agreeing that number one should stay with district employees, and that for number two, if there is priority, siblings, then Santa Barbara City College? I see, see, siblings, yes, and then I don't see as many nods, because I think, or, you know, or do we put Santa Barbara City College and public employees in one?
My, my preference would be, you know, I see that we have a unique relationship, but I also see that, you know, you've made the point about looking at county employees, public safety, which are critical. I mean, one of the, yeah, but when I look at a priority, public safety officers in this community, given the number of employ, I, I have gotten an estimate of 60% of our public safety employees in the city of Santa Barbara don't live in the city of Santa Barbara. So is that a priority in my book? Yeah, it's a big priority. I want them to be here, I want their kids to be here, if there's an emergency, they should be here. So I almost feel like they need to be pulled within that same tier, if we're going to look at a tier, along with city college. And not as a second or third, or, I mean, a third or a fourth tier.
Ms. Parker?
And I'm okay with that. I just still do think, and the difference for me is that they are actually teaching our children. And it, it's the educational piece. Um, and so although there's, you know, many reasons why it makes sense for public safety to have a priority, that, um, it, it's, it's really about the education piece and the idea of sort of a pre-K 14 system, and our hundreds of students being taught at city college and through dual enrollment, um, that, to me, uh, that's why it makes some sense to call it out separately, and to show, um, in multiple ways that we call them out separately, including in, uh, you know, MOUs and board policies, um, so that when, uh, issues come up, that we can say, this is, you know, we recognize that there's a special relationship with city college, um, and this is why their college recruiters can come onto our campus. Um, they're not the same as somebody from another student, so, from another institution.
May I suggest, um, just, just two siblings, city college?
Mm-hmm.
And then see, after the first year, what the makeup of the applications are, and maybe revisit it a year from now and, you know, and make different priorities if, in fact, we, we see there's a trend towards different priorities.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. And, and I'm certainly flexible, uh, you know, Ms. Limone, you're right on, this is something that we revisit every year, and also something as we're, as we're cracking the door open, that we will really be scrutinizing. So...
So somehow make it 50 elementary?
Up to 50.
Up to 50?
In each, for a total of 100.
And, um, I think, are we making the assumption that the majority of those applications will probably be at OAS?
I don't know about the majority of applications, but I can certainly, I would guess that the majority of space is going to be at OAS.
I have a question. Is there anything right now where you, Mr. Torino, could say, you know what, schools that are at 95% capacity don't get considered until July? Like, is there anything, I mean, do you, because I know you look at every single space, but there are really some schools that we can probably all name off the top of our heads that are going to be the most popular and do not have the room. So in some ways, they get weeded out right away because of the history we have? I mean, or is there something that gives you a safety to also say, "Yeah, these schools, they're out because of this capacity, because for the last three years, they've met their 100%"? Um, is there something in place that the district uses? Is there something that needs to be in place that would give you a little bit of safety in, you know, exploring this 50 or so?
There's nothing in place currently that we use, but if directed by the board, we could look at those schools and say, "So these schools are not going to be considered in, in this placement."
So, and I don't know, and I don't know what that would be, but I mean, if the school has hit 100% capacity in the last five years or something, to me, it's like, okay, well, that school just doesn't get even considered. I don't know how, I don't know what kind of...
It would, yeah, I mean, I, I think that would be a mistake to have that in board policy, something like that.
Okay, so could we have it in, like, a practice?
Certainly.
I'm trying to give the district some safeguard here, because this is so new.
But there must be something in place already, because, uh, look at all the sibling transfers that are denied at those schools.
It's as space available.
Uh, but it's, you know, you, you, it's not just looking at it in, in March, um, you know, kids are coming into these...
It's all the way up to...
And so kids are just, are they just being, you know, they're just being, their lottery number is being held, essentially. They're not guaranteed that space until close to, um, school, starting at these schools where there's not going to be a space. You have, you have a lottery number.
Yeah. And these applications would be the bottom of the lottery list. I'm sure that Mr. Torino would say anybody coming from Ventura, asking for an intra-district transfer to Washington, he probably would say, "You don't stand a very good chance. Maybe you shouldn't put your, you know, put your application in, but you don't stand a very good chance." Roosevelt, all of the schools, anybody is going to ask the question, and I think Mr. Torino would say, you know, "You better visit OAS." Or one of the other schools, but most of them, you know, won't have space because it'd be the last in the lottery. Uh, I would, I, you know, I would suggest, and this is my feeling, is if we can, if we can change section two to reflect what we're talking about, but when it comes back, uh, and, and maybe when it comes back, include paragraph four, just have it there, we can discuss, we can take it out. Uh, it's, this is obviously not a consent item coming back. But I would guess, I would ask one more comment, um, although we can't vote. Is there any thoughts on the board that something's going to change that will help OAS, and that they can look at and say, "Let's go recruit"?
Oh, I see what you're saying. I think obviously there's going to be space at OAS. You know, one way or the other, there's going to be space at OAS.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah.
Up to 50, I think, is...
Yeah, I mean, they, they could be saying, "Well, there'll be at least 25, but there could be 50."
Fifty, right, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the way I would be approaching that if I were OAS, out recruiting right now.
I mean, this, what would our discussion doesn't really say at least 25. I mean, it's...
Well, if, if number four goes back in.
Yeah, if we catch number four, yes, but if we don't, then it's 50, and, um, okay, yeah.
And just to follow up on that, I am, there is interest on my behalf to find a way to help OAS. I mean, I said this last year, it's the only school who cannot recruit, recruit neighborhood students because they belong to another district, so I am of the mind that I would like to help.
Okay, I just want the consensus, we're not voting.
And I would say the same...
You can read what you want into that.
And I would say the same thing, and I'm very supportive in that regard, because I think one of the things that we both said last year was, we have the district helped create this problem.
Yeah, exactly.
It's our chore to try to fix it.
I mean, have we given you enough direction to come back with some wording in two?
Too much direction.
Lots of direction.
There you go, come up with that.
Change number one back to what it was, come back for something in two, using the numbers 50 and 50, and separating out elementary and secondary?
The big difference will be when you ask who wrote this, it'll be Mr. Torino.
And was there direction in regards to priority within, uh, number two?
Yeah, siblings first, and then city college.
Okay, will do.
Anything else? I'm going to thank you, and I want to thank you for coming and sharing with us. Okay, we will go to, um, I four, and you don't have to stay.
So, Mr. President, we are close to 10 o'clock.
Oh, would, are, are I four and I five something has to be done tonight?
Neither.
Okay.
I, in fact, I five could be done as a board brief, if the board would like that. It's, essentially, you've seen the document, it's just a reporting on the work we've done to date, and I could, we could just submit it as a board brief.
Okay. And I did notice that I four is quite lengthy, and...
I four is at least 20 minutes.
So, is that, anybody have any complaints on that? If not, uh, let's go to coming events. I had a, I had a few just to read off. Donznet Cafe at 10 o'clock Friday morning.
Here's the flyer.
Okay. Facility Department Annual Breakfast, 7:30 on Thursday here at the district office. Ribbon Cutting at Lacoomber Auditorium on the 17th at 9:30. San Marcos Madrigals, 7 o'clock at San Roke Church. And if you read the news, look at the audience. If you, if you, if you read the News-Hawk article, the, uh, Madrigals...
We usually do that.
Yeah, the Madrigals went to, um, the airport and did a flash, and had a, had a flash mob where they broke out in song, so fantastic. And then the Parent Resource Center is having a support-ready reading and writing with technology Thursday night at 5:00 to 6:30.
I also want to announce that, um, on Sunday, the 14th, from 9:00 to 1:00, the eyeglass factory will be giving out free eyeglasses and eye, uh, eye exams for students and families in our neighborhood. Um, and I think that there, the, is it the city or the county dental, um, will be doing, like, free dental examinations for our families as well. So I sent that, I think, information over to E! News, so I hope that, I'm hoping that it will make it on their...
We'll make sure it does.
They are very generous in giving free eyeglasses and free, um, dental exams.
Are there any future agenda items? Ms. Parker?
I have two. One is, um, the, uh, hearing about, and then hopefully formally adopting the elementary school music curriculum. Um, and then I would like to hear about Title IX, um, and the state of Title IX in the district, and maybe that's a conference item at some point in the next year.
And, uh, Ms. Parker, would you be kind enough to send me your list of future items? Do you still keep that?
Yeah, actually, Dr. Cash does have that, but I'm also happy to send it to you.
Send you yours, like, I have yours in a board brief, I believe, we have it. So I'll put the two together and we'll start a new one. Okay? If that's okay? Um, okay. Anything else by anybody?
No.